Town meeting. The town clerk has ascertained that there is a quorum that's present and the town constable has certified that the warrants for both the special and the annual town meeting have been properly posted and served. The quorum count at the start of the meeting was 127 with 111 required. Before we begin, are there any new town meeting members or re-elected town meeting members that will need to be sworn in? Please stand. Raise your hand. And repeat after me. Of course, when I say I state your name, you don't say state your name. You put your actual name in there. That's... So I state your name. Very good. A duly elected town meeting member do solemnly swear that I will honestly faithfully and impartially discharge my duties in accordance with the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and the bylaws of the town of Holbrook. So help me God. Thank you and thank you for your service. Okay, now that everybody's sat down again, would all please rise? Boy Scouts of the Troop 153 are going to come forward and they're going to present a 13-star flag that was flown over the Constitution to the town and also deliver the Pledge of Allegiance. Scouts forward.
Please place the flag for the Pledge of Allegiance. Hand over your heart.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which is the foundation under God, in this world, and in justice.
Please remain standing. We'll take a brief moment of silence for folks who have served the town in the past and are no longer with us at this meeting. These include Mr. Richard Monti, the robotics teacher from Holbrook High School, Lawrence Lonnie McGagney, who coached him, was the number one in town, Yvonne Wright, town meeting member from Precinct One, Dorothy Keppel, administrator of the Wendell Cemetery, George Rogers, election worker and baseball coach of the town for many years, and also in remembrance of all members past and present of our armed service. A moment of silence. Please remain standing and the opening blessing will be delivered by Pastor Thomas Bedrow of St. Joseph's Church. Pastor?
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, your wisdom, and your support as we begin this meeting to serve the Holbrook community. We ask you to fill us with your grace, Lord God, as we make decisions that could affect not only ourselves but others. Keep us mindful to use our resources wisely and well, to represent all members of our community fairly, to make decisions that promote the common good. We recognize our responsibility to the past and to the future, to the rights and needs of both individuals and of the community. As trusted servants, we seek your blessing on our deliberations and on our efforts here today. Continue to remind us that all that we do here today, all that we accomplish, is for the pursuit of truth and for the greater glory of you and for the service of our brothers and sisters in this community. We ask all these things in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Father Bedrow. Troop dismissed and please be seated. I'd like just a couple of thank yous before we begin. First of all, our town meeting checkers and tellers who check folks in at the front and who will be counting votes and who will be very busy this evening, Deborah Hoyt, Barbara Jameson, Janet O'Neil, Pam Solis, Deb Joyce, and Anissa Stedowski. Thank you very much. And also, we are, have the folks from HCAM who are providing the audio and visual services for us tonight, and also from the Video Production Club, Zach Gorman, Jenna Gagny, Dylan Carroll Brown, Peter Harris, and Matt Messina. And I'm told somewhere tonight that we may have Senator John Keenan and Representative Mark Cusick in the House. Are they here this evening? Stand up. Okay. They're not here, so, but they've been recognized. Just to welcome in general rules, could I ask folks now, both in the town meeting area but also something, turn your cellphones off, iPads, Playstation 4s. If you need to answer a call, take it outside. There is a town bylaw that was written in 1872 that prohibits cellphone use at town meeting. It's somewhere in the town archives, but it states clearly that the first cellphone that rings during town meeting, that person is required to buy the entire town meeting electorate pizza. The second phone that rings buys the beverages to go with them. So the wise person, like me, turns their phone off. Other things, too, texting. If you feel the urge to tweet something out followed by the word "sad," it doesn't work out too well. Please refrain from doing that during the meeting. Instagram, get the moderator's good side. Okay. In the rope area here tonight, only elected town meeting members. Are there any non-elected town meeting members in the roped-in area this evening? Okay, so, your vote town meetings, but from here down is not elected town meeting members. So you're not allowed to vote. So when the checkers are watching, other than the first two in the first row on this side, everybody else is countable. And, you know, if you come in to speak and use a microphone from the stands for some reason, please leave the roped-in area before any voting takes place. All resident voters and town meeting members may speak on the articles. Raise your hand. Wait to be acknowledged. Depending on how many speakers there are, we have one microphone here and we have a handheld microphone. We may line people up. If there's not many, we'll just do a hand count and bring folks in. Wait for the microphone. We're on cable TV broadcasting the entire town. America's Got Talent is potentially watching this, too, so, you know, make sure you're showing your good side. Address the moderator, not others. There's no cross-examination allowed. Face the moderator so I can get your attention wherever possible. And remember that when you get up to the microphone, to state your name and your precinct if you're a town meeting member, or your name and the street you live on, if you're not a town meeting member in which to speak. If you have a procedural motion, again, point of order or something like that, raise your hand, wait to be recognized by the moderator, and then you may move up to speak. When you're speaking on an article, some rules. Stay germane to the motion or article being considered. In other words, if the article's about one thing, you can't talk about something else. If you drift off of that, I'll remind you to stay within the guidelines. There's no cross-examination from here to here or over here to here allowed. Direct your questions. If you have them to the moderator, we'll try to get somebody to answer them for you. Don't engage in personalities, calling people by their name, you know, Mr. So-and-so, Mrs. So-and-so, or in the second person, like, hey, you over there, or that person there. Those are out of order. If you persist in that, then the moderator will ask you to take your seat. Speakers do so at the discretion of the moderator, by the way. The way the procedure will go, we have some new members here. The motions for each article will be read and seconded. The finance committee by town bylaw will give a brief recommendation on their opinion of the article first, and then any debate will follow, and I'll tell you what the vote counts are, whether they're yes or no, and so forth. Again, if you have a motion to amend an article, and we have a couple of amendments tonight, they are supposed to be in writing by town bylaw. We have some forms up here at the clerk's office. If you need help in getting one or filling one out, let us know and we'll do that. But a motion is not in order unless it's in written form with the clerk. And the reason for that is, is we need to get it legally right, which you're moving. Procedural motions do not require that. Respect each of the town meeting members' right to speak openly on articles. No speaking out of turn or interrupting. No cheering or booing from the bleachers. Violators will be asked to leave. I'm going to start off here with a couple of procedural votes. The first motion will be to allow the following non-residents to speak at town. This will be William Smith, the police chief, Donald Cullen, library director, Arthur P. Boyle, Jr., the health agent, Patrick Haring, the principal assessor, Bethany Mosley, town accountant, Stephen Hook, communications director, Patricia Lugos from schools, Mark Robrowski, attorney, and David DeLuca, representing town council. Motion is moved and seconded. Is there any, our discussion on the procedural motion to allow the out-of-town folks to talk? Simple majority rules. All those in favor? All those opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Are there any, let's see, let's go, are there any other procedural motions? Somebody told me there was one that may be to take an article up out of order. Your article is not going to go. Was there any other, I missed, come up to the microphone?
I'd like to make a motion to-
Could you identify yourself and your precinct?
Sure. My name is Catherine Goldrick, precinct two. I'd like to make a motion to move Article 27 just before Article 5. We have several young children here that have a vested interest in this article, and I want to make sure that they get home at an appropriate time.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion or debate on the article which would move? Mr. Costa?
I don't believe that we have a long-standing practice of you take care of the miscellaneous articles, and we always take the budget up as the first main article. That was the plan, move zoning actually, after the budget, so we could take up the budget. I don't think we should be moving anything in front of the budget article. Thank you.
Any further discussions or comments on the procedural motion on the floor? Okay, so on a procedural motion by Ms. Goldrick to move Article 27, to take that up just before Article 5, this is a majority vote as a procedural motion. All those in favor of moving this Article 27 to just before Article 5, raise your hands. All those opposed? The chair is in doubt. Could we have the, you may sit down.
Thank you.
The chair is in doubt. Could we have the tellers come up and do a count for us, please? All those who are in favor of moving this just before Article 5, please stand and remain standing until your rows are counted. Please be seated. All those opposed to moving Article 27 to just before Article 5, please rise and remain standing. So did we count the folks up front that were standing? Is there a teller assigned to that section? Did you guys count those? Janet, did you count all of the folks standing up front here as well? Okay, let's add those in. Sorry, I'll keep you standing for a few minutes. There's no extra charge for the exercise. Okay, thank you. Please be seated while the votes tallied. The motion does not carry. Article 27 will be taken up in order as Article 27. As we move, that's the last. Are there any other procedural motions on the floor? Okay. We're opening the annual town meeting, and within the annual town meeting is a special town meeting slated to go off at 8:15. We'll handle as many articles as we can. At that time, the moderator will look for a motion to recess or adjourn the annual town meeting until such time as the special town meeting is completed. Then we'll return to the annual town meeting and continue with the numbered articles at that point in time. So the special town meeting is a mechanism for budgetary changes during the year that don't fit on the regular annual town meeting warrant. Essentially, two meetings tonight. We'll start one, we'll go as far as we can, we'll do the other one, and then we'll go back to the original one. Okay, let me just get situated here with the sheet, and we'll start with the annual town meeting. You're reading tonight, Mr. Gordon?
I am.
Okay, Mr. Gordon, Article 1, zoning article.
Mr. Moderator, I move no action on Article 1.
Is there discussion on the motion for no action on Article 1?
Yes, Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Gordon?
Based on some open issues relative to the map and some of the language, I'm recommending no action. A tremendous amount of work went into this article. It's really a major piece of legislation for the town, and we're almost there, but we're not quite there. So I didn't want to bring something to the floor of town meeting until it was ready, and waiting till the fall will have no adverse impact.
I thought we had a second anyway. That's two seconds. Is that four? Do you wish to speak on that? Oh, sure.
Finance committee recommends no action, six-zero.
Any further discussion on the motion for no action on Article 1, the zoning article? Does anyone require reading of the article? Okay, thank you. All right. The motion is in the negative. All those in favor of taking no action, raise your hands. All those opposed to taking no action. Motion and no action carries unanimously. No action is taken on Article number one. Mr. Gordon, this is Article 2, reports of town officers.
I move that the town accept the reports as presented.
Motion's moved and seconded. I don't think there's a FinCom recommendation for that one. Yeah, okay. It's printed. Is there any discussion on Article 2 to accept the reports, or any reports?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, I'd like to make a brief report on behalf of the Board of Selectmen.
Go ahead, Mr. Gordon.
The full 2017 annual report is available on the town's webpage. I'll comment on some of the highlights over the past year. Clearly, the most exciting highlight is our school building project. The new school is scheduled to be turned over to the town next month on June 15th, and all our students will begin the next year in the new building. So this is extremely exciting for the entire community. And I also want to extend a big thank you to all that helped out and participated in the April 30th decommissioning event here at this school. It was an overwhelming success. We had over 1,000 people walking through the halls here, alumni and residents, and it was outstanding. So thanks to those folks. And finally, on the schools, demolition of this building is scheduled to begin in July. So this appears to be our last town meeting in this room. So, doesn't mean we have to make it memorable, but it'll probably be the last one. Under town finances, our efforts last year to improve tax title collection paid off with the certification of over 1.4 million in free cash for the town. This represents the highest certified free cash on record for the town of Holbrook. We hope to see a continuation of this trend in FY18. And we're in the process of converting our integrated financial systems with a new integrated financial software system. The general ledger converts on July 1. The modules will follow throughout the fiscal year. We received a grant of $65,000 to help fund this. Under public works, water main replacements have been completed on Crescent Drive, Laurel Park, and Pond Street. Paving projects complete on Belcher Street, Hillsdale Road, Grove Ave., Shirley Street, Shirley Terrace, and School Street. We're also in the engineering phase of the Union Street Reconstruction Project that will be funded through the State Transportation Improvement Program, known as the TIP. It's still a few years away, but securing the funding and being on the TIP is half the battle. For public safety updates, the police department has been aggressively working to become accredited department through the Massachusetts Police Accreditation Program. Chief Smith has been working very hard on this. It's a rigorous process with over 250 requirements which must be met, and the goal is to obtain accreditation in the year 2018. The fire department received our new engine truck this past August, which replaced the 1995 model. And our dispatch function continues to expand with the addition of the town of Canton effective June 1st, just a couple of weeks to this next month. Public safety operations collectively were awarded over $700,000 in grant funds during fiscal year 17 for a range of equipment, staffing, education, training programs. So, big congratulations to our chief and Director Hook for a job well done. The town also received a community development block grant for $700,000 to rehab homes for low-income families and to provide fuel assistance. This was a joint grant between the town of Holbrook and the town of Rockland, 60% Holbrook, 40% Rockland. And in March, the old selectmen's meeting room in town hall was officially designated by the selectmen as the heritage room. This room displays numerous pictures, documents, and artifacts that reflect the heritage of our town. Most notably is the town quilt that's prominently displayed there. And another big thanks to Edna Bowers and Sarah Stinson, who worked hard on that as We have many community events throughout the year. Some of the highlights include our Memorial Day Parade and Ceremony, and our Memorial Day We Remember Road Race, which is coming up. We have our Flag Day Ceremony at the South School, Student Government Day, the December Tree Lighting Ceremony, and the Council on Aging Christmas Party. All of these events represent the enthusiasm and pride we have for our hometown. Moving on to hails and farewells, we'd also like to recognize our recent retirees and new hires. Town retirements included Connie Orlando, COA coordinator, Police Sergeant Joe Salvucci, Dick Tucker from the DPW Department, Eloise Haley from the town clerk's office, and Nancy McClellan from the assessor's office. School retirements, or planned retirements at the end of this school year, include Patricia Chalupa, paraprofessional, Mary Ann DeMello, principal, Elaine Foster, kindergarten teacher, Cynthia Tossi, special ed teacher. We also regret the loss of our science teacher, Mr. Richard Montieth, who passed away in February. Mr. Montieth taught at our high school for over 15 years. He started the robotics program and coached a variety of sports. Mr. Montieth will be sorely missed. And we also want to welcome our new hires. On the town side, it includes police officers Justin Murphy and Nathaniel Ruckard, DPW worker Joe Barry, Assistant Library Director Katrina Ely, Principal Clerk in the Assessor's Office Pam Solis, and Principal Clerk in Inspection Services Deb Joyce. And for new hires at the schools, Laura Stevenson, STEAM Coordinator, George Bain, custodian, Loretta Blue, special ed teacher, Brendan Case, phys ed teacher, Jennifer Carr, paraprofessional, Nicole Flynn, paraprofessional, Jorge Gonzalez, Technology Director, Jessica Legrand, Admin Assistant, Caitlin Marcher, school psychologist, Julianne Mack, foreign language teacher, DeMarice Pallone, art teacher, DeSue Santos, science teacher, and Ashley Sullivan, special ed teacher. A warm welcome to all our new employees. In closing, I just want to thank all of our hard-working town employees and the many dedicated volunteers who serve on our boards and committees. Your continued efforts and teamwork will guide us through the challenges that await us in fiscal year 18. And to the people of Holbrook, thank you for being active and spirited members of our community. Your energy and your involvement in all things is really what sets us apart and will continue to move us forward. Thank you. That's my report.
Any further discussion or reports on Article 2? Seeing none, it's a majority vote to accept the reports of the town officers. All is in favor? All is opposed? That carries unanimously. Mr. Gordon, Article 3?
I move that the town accept the reports as presented.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Is there a FinCom recommendation? FinCom recommendation, or do you wave? He waves, okay. All ready. Any further discussion? Majority vote, all is in favor? All is opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Gordon, Article number 4.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town authorize the Board of Selectmen upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Public Works to accept and enter into contracts for the expenditures of any and all funds allotted by the Commonwealth, including its Department of Transportation and/or Norfolk County, for the construction, reconstruction, and improvements of town streets.
Motion has been made and seconded. Finance Committee? Fin and Com, for those who didn't hear, recommend seven to zero. Discussion, Mr. Gordon, you want to lead off?
Mr. Moderator, this article essentially allows the town to enter into contracts to spend primarily our Chapter 90 money.
Further comments, discussions, questions on Article number 4? Seeing none, this requires a majority vote to see if the town will authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept in the contracts as printed in the warrant. All is in favor? All is opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Mr. Gordon, for Article number 5?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town authorize the Library Board of Trustees to retain and expend a sum of money to be received by the town treasurer under Public Libraries, Chapter 78, Section 19A, during the 12-month period beginning July 1, 2017, and any other unexpended sums previously received from the same source. The sums to be held and carried forward for the general use of the library.
Motion made and seconded, FinCom?
Finance Committee recommends passage 7-0.
Thank you. Discussion?
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Gordon?
This is similar to the last one. This allows the town to spend funds received through state aid for library funds.
Further discussion, comments, or questions on this article? Seeing no hands, Article number 5 requires a majority to authorize the public library use of state aid as printed in the warrant. All is in favor of Article 5? All is opposed? That motion carries. You're in favor or opposed? In favor? You, you were, you were late with your hand going down. No, no worries. I just want to make sure I got it right. Unanimous. Okay, the next article coming up is the town budget. So in the handouts and things you should have got in the mail or at the back, you'll find a sheet on the annual town budget. Looks like something like this here. So I wanted to call your attention to that. If anybody needs one and doesn't have one, run it back. I think there might be some copies left. The way we're going to do that, we do the town budget, is the FinCom will read off each budget section. We'll pause briefly after each budget section to hear if there are any amendments or questions or concerns about that, and then we'll move on and continue reading with the next section. When we reach the end of the budget, we'll have a ratifying amendment on that budget section, and then there are two follow-on amendments. One, three actually, one for solid waste, one for water, and one for sewer. I believe it's broken down that way. We'll vote on those. And then at the end of that, after it's all ratified, we'll actually vote on the budget Article number 6 in its entirety. It's a little confusing, but it's the best way I've found to get through the budget quickly and to answer anybody's concerns. Questions about that process? Okay, good. I'm going to look for, you're going to issue the motion on Article 6?
Motion, motion to vote the budget.
Motion's been made and seconded. I'll turn it over to the FinCom to begin the enumeration of the budget. The motion on the floor, by the way, I think your microphone might have cut out there, was to accept the budget as printed in the warrant. Is that correct?
Well, to open the budget.
Open the budget, okay.
Open the budget so we can start discussing it.
Okay, great.
I just want to give a little overview of the budget process, where we are, what the process was like, and from a finance standpoint. Based on the FY17 recap to look back at the current fiscal year, the town could have spent 4.3% increase over the prior year, 1.6 million. However, we had only increased by 3%, or 1.1 million, leaving $546,000, or 2% of tax capacity as excess capacity that was untaxed in this current fiscal year. We had the excess capacity due to strong free cash and responsible estimates during budgeting. The FY18 budget proposed would see a 2.7% increase in spending. That's less than what we saw on the 3% this past, or this current year. This budget assumes using all available taxes and receipts, along with some capital stabilization. We anticipated that some funds may be available at the fall town meeting and during the recap process to decrease the tax levy and create some excess capacity again. Highlights or lowlights on the revenue side, state aid. State aid is actually less in FY18 right now than what we received in FY17. We have a one-time change that is happening, an accounting change for ambulance receipts, which causes a $350,000 decrease in available funds for the FY18 budget. There's a, in the process, there's a new accounting thing that you're going to see in there for HCAM, which is, again, just a new accounting thing that's a revenue offset by an expense. We also have new revenues related to the Canton Dispatch, and we utilize 70, approximately $70,000 from the capital stabilization to help fund the capital plant. On the expense side, we've increased the reserve fund to add a float for when the j-. On the expense side, we've increased the reserve fund to add a float for when the JFK and South are turned over to the town. There will be a period of time where the town has to take on the liability for those buildings, so we have a, a little bit of a buffer in there for that. Public safety are level-staffed, except for increases related to that new Canton Dispatch. There was a proposal to add a deputy chief position to the Police Department, and although generally we were in favor of that, unfortunately, the funding was not there this year. In education, we have a 2.3% increase in the education line item. And due to a decrease in the pupil count at Blue Hills and Norfolk Aggie, greater than the Holbrook Public Schools drop in pupil count, that allowed some monies to be shifted to the Holbrook Public Schools line items, resulting in an increase of $481,000 for the Holbrook Public Schools, or 3.56%. This is a large increase, and it's not something that should be anticipated on an annual basis to be that, that significant. Public Works Department, we're able to maintain current staffing, add some funds for some seasonal employees, as well as add the, add some funds for possible professional cleaning within town facilities, freeing up skilled employees to better utilize their abilities. And the Public Services, which is, Public Services, since 2009, when state aid was cut, major cuts were made locally. We have not made major changes to the Public Services section of the budget. Seeing the value that is provided and the quality of life improvements possible in this section as the larger-than-normal increase in funds. Namely, we added 156 clerical hours to the Council on Aging. We would like to see a long-term plan and vision for the Council on Aging so we can understand how funds will be used to more greatly impact the population of Holbrook. This budget invests significantly in our library to meet state requirement for grants. We anticipate the Library Trustees will take these additional funds and make a concerted effort to increase services being provided, such as increased hours and programs. For insurances, newly negotiated premium split, health insurance premium split, is helping to keep health insurance costs somewhat in check. We do ask that those covered, look at the plans and try to modify as best as they can, choose the lowest-cost plan to the town. We do have a large jump in our other insurance line item, and that's mainly due to the new school and having to insure that new building. It's a higher cost than insuring our existing buildings. The capital, this budget will provide sufficient funds for projects as requested by the Capital Planning Committee, but remember, we are using $69,000 of stabilization fund in our, in this budget. And the enterprise funds, rates need to be reviewed, and they should be reviewed annually to make sure that those funds are maintained well. So with that, I'm going to get into the details of the budget.
Okay.
So move the town vote to raise appropriate and transfer from available funds, sum of $38,905,110 to defray the expenses of the Holbrook operating budget, as further described below, for the ensuing 12-month period beginning July 1, 2017. Raise $37,413,520. Transfer from available funds, Wetlands Protection Act 2000, Fire Alarm 15,550, Water Operations 669,760, Sewer Operations 393,823, Solid Waste Operations 133,458, Ambulance Receipts Reserved 250,000, for a total of $38,905,110.
Motion has been made and seconded. You're going to read the budget?
Give me one second, Mr. Moderator.
Sure.
Oh, I said the wrong thing? So, Mr. Moderator, may I clarify? The water operations should be $696,760.
As printed.
As printed.
As printed, okay.
General Government, 122, Selectmen Expenses $11,000, 123, Town Administrator Salaries $204,967, Expenses $500, Total $205,467. 151, Town Council Expenses $75,000, 161, Town Clerk. Town Clerk Salary $65,077, Salaries $61,839, Expenses $6,170, Total $133,860. 162, Elections Expenses $25,500, 163, Board of Registars Salaries $7,200, 195, Town Reports Expenses $250, General Government Total $457,503.
Anything on General Government? Okay, we'll move into the next section.
Financial Services Expenses, 131, Finance Committee Expenses $600, 132, Reserve Expenses $147,500, 135, Town Accountant Salaries $155,656, Expenses $68,859, Total $224,515. 141, Assessor Salaries $162,404, Expenses $46,580, Total $208,984. 145, Treasurer Collector, Treasurer Salary $66,046, Salaries $124,849, Expenses $98,612, Total $289,507. Financial Services Total $871,106.
HCAM on the floor, Mike, please.
Hello? Chuck Reilly, Precinct 2, just a question about the large expense increase for the Town Accountant. Just wondering what that is.
Thank you, Mr. Reilly.
I'll see if I can answer it quickly without, the new software package, basically, the new integrated software that'll be overseeing all the finances comes at a, at a higher cost. And in this one year, we do have, we are going to run concurrent systems, our existing system, but even when that goes away, the cost of the new system is significantly more than when that system does go away.
Any further in that section? Mr. Costa?
Public Safety, 200, Public Safety Building Salaries $12,308, Expenses $112,192, Total 210, Police Department Salaries $22,25942, Expenses $192,000, Total $2397,942. 220, Fire Department Salaries $21,026, Expenses $104,800, Total $22,5826. 230, EMT Salaries $200,112, Expenses $99,500, Total $299,612. 225, Dispatch Salaries $750,611, Expenses $42,000, Total $792,611. 291, Emergency Management Expenses $1,000, 292, Animal Control Salaries $35,942, Expenses $10,700, Total $46,642. Public Safety Total $5,868,133.
Questions on Public Safety? Mr. Costa?
Inspection Services, 244, Waits and Measures Salaries $4,245, Expenses $480, Total $4,725. 240, Inspection Services Salaries $158,841, Expenses $31,300, Total $190,141. Inspection Services Total $194,866.
Nothing on Inspection Services. Okay, Mr. Costa?
Education, 300, Schools, Blue Hills $1833,536, Norfolk Aggie $25,493, Total $1859,029. 301, Holbrook Public Schools $12,852,653, 371, School Transportation $1,171,185, Education Total $15,882,867. And further, any payments made to Norfolk Agricultural Schools shall be made with prejudice concerning pending legal actions.
Questions on Education? Miss, come up to the microphone or, yeah, that's close.
Hi, it's Renee Walker, Precinct 4, and this is a question for the School Department with the new school opening in the fall. And I know that, it's my understanding that the line item budget can change after town meeting, and I just was wondering if somebody could speak to, if there's going to be consolidation or loss of positions next year, and specifically, health and nursing?
Thank you. Is there, again, is there someone from the School Department would like to speak to that? You know, normally, we, we avoid questions back and forth, but, you know, where there's technical questions to be answered, it's up to, you know, the departments if they want to answer them, and it's probably a good idea that they do so, but there's no strict requirement.
At this time, once we have the firm numbers, which we do on our budget, the leadership team is working right now. We will know for sure what changes will happen within the next week or two. And that's, you know, we're working with them right now, and the budget that we've been given is what we're working with.
Thank you. Any further questions on the budget for the School Department? Seeing none, Mr. Costa will move forward into Public Works next.
Public Works, 400, Public Works Salaries $860,921, Expenses $254,100, Total $1,115,021. 422, Construction and Maintenance Roads and Sidewalks $58,000. 423, Snow and Ice $146,000. 424, Street Lighting $165,000. Public Works Total $1,484,021.
Seeing no hands, we'll move on to Public Services.
Public Services, 294, Forest Committee Expenses $1,000. 541, Council on Aging Salaries $64,406, Expenses $12,000, Total $76,406. 543, Veteran Services Salaries $9,608, Expenses $80,850, Total $90,458. 610, Public Library Salaries $277,529, Expenses $135,606, Total $413,135. 691, Historical Commission Expenses $100, Public Services Total $581,099.
Anything on Public Services? Seeing nothing. Mr. Costa, moving to Debt?
Debt, 71, Debt Outside Proposition 2 and 1/2, 710, Maturing Debt $2,786,123, 751, Interest $1,588,891, 751, Debt Administration $11,500, Total $4,386,514. 752, Temporary Loan Interest Loans $545,366, Interest $88,059, Total $633,425. Debt Total $5,019,939.
Seeing nothing, we'll move forward to Employee Retiree Benefits.
911, Employee Benefits Medicare $260,100, Pensions $1,894,272, Total $2,154,372. 914, Health Insurance $5,237,550. 915, Employee Life Insurance $19,000. 916, Dental Insurance $30,000. Employee Retiree Benefits $7,440,922.
Seeing no hands, we'll move on to, let's see, we're in, HCAM? Other insurance, okay.
913, Unemployment Insurance Unemployment $125,000. 945, Other Insurance Other Insurance $475,878, Workers' Comp $136,760, Total $612,638. Other Insurance Total $737,638.
Seeing no hands. HCAM?
HCAM Contract $200,000.
No hands, Capital Improvement Fund?
Transfer to the Capital Improvement Fund $167,011.
Seeing no hands on Capital Improvement?
Further, $5 shall be placed into the General Stabilization Fund.
Do we want to have a quick ratifying vote on that? All in favor? This, first of all, are there any amendments or motions to amend the above section? Everybody all set? Okay, let's just have a quick, this is a non-binding motion. This just ratifies the amendment to the main motion. The actual motion that, the budget entirety will be made at the end, and I'll instruct you when it actually will be in effect. All is in favor of acceptances above? All is opposed? That carries by a majority. Mr. Costa, you want to move?
I think that was unanimous.
Unanimous, yeah.
Move that the following sums-
Majority is unanimous.
Move that the following sums be appropriated for the Sewer Enterprise. Direct expenses $2,44,394, and that $2,44,394 be raised from the Sewer Enterprise revenues and retained earnings, and that $29,352 from said direct expenses shall be transferred to the Capital Improvement Fund of the General Fund. And that $393,823, having been appropriated in the General Fund operating budget for various departments, shall be allocated to the Sewer Enterprise for funding via revenues and retained earnings, and that $684,134, having been appropriated in the General Fund operating budget for excluded debt for Sewer Enterprise projects, shall not be allocated to the Sewer Enterprise for funding.
So that was a motion. Was there a second on that motion? Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion on the amendment for the sewer function? No further discussion? All in favor of the Sewer Enterprise Fund? As read? All is opposed? That carries unanimously. We move to Water Enterprise Fund?
Move that the following sums be appropriated for the Water Enterprise. Direct expenses of $2,327,676, and that $2,327,676 be raised from the Water Enterprise revenues and retained earnings, and that $26,940 from said direct expenses shall be transferred to the Capital Improvement Fund of the General Fund, and that $696,760, having been appropriated in the General Fund operating budget for various departments, shall be allocated to the Water Enterprise Fund for funding via revenues and retained earnings, and that $532,812, having been appropriated in the General Fund operating budget for excluded debt for water projects, shall not be allocated to the Water Enterprise for funding.
Motion has been made? Any further discussion?
Susan Wright, Precinct 1, could you just explain why the money's not going in there? I mean, I've been here forever, and I don't get it, and there's a lot of new people that are just sitting here going, what? Could you explain that, please?
That last sentence?
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
I believe it's the last sentence.
Okay. So that is excluded debt. So, excluded debt means it's already raised on the taxes, so we can't double raise it. If you put it on to the water rates, then you would have to decrease it on the taxes, and it's already a two-and-a-half override. So that's, that's a clarification that our, our new town accountant and Department of Revenue asked for. It's one of our prior motions, they asked for this clarification. It was, it was always there, but the spelling out specifically that this was not being double calculated, double, being able to be double billed, is why it's more accurately spelled out and saying clear language there.
I, I kind of got that. Is anybody still unclear of that? Okay, one, want to give it another, maybe rephrase or something?
So, so these are projects that before we, oftentimes before we even had enterprise funds, they, we voted a debt exclusion. So we raised the taxes to pay for a water project or a sewer project. Then we've, we've introduced enterprise funds since then, but because we're already paying for it on the taxes, it's a, it's a bill that's related to water or sewer that we have to show that it's part of running the enterprise. However, the tax levy is paying for that specific project that was voted prior to having the enterprise fund, as opposed to the water or sewer payer paying for that specific project.
I'm not sure it is, it is-
I see some heads nodding.
I see a few getting it, yeah. Do we, do we need a further clarification? I want to make sure you know what you're voting on. Okay, seeing no hands, I'll, I'll assume that's good, and we can move on to Solid Waste next.
We didn't vote that.
Oh, yeah, that'd be a good idea, yeah. I always forget that part. I was like, a majority to amend this motion for the, for the Water Enterprise. All is in favor of the motion? All is opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now we can move on to Solid Waste.
Move that the following sums be appropriated for the Solid Waste Enterprise. Direct expenses $531,198, and that the $531,198 be raised from the Solid Waste Enterprise revenues and retained earnings, and that $7,198 from said direct expenses shall be transferred to the Capital Improvement Fund of the General Fund, and that $133,458, having been appropriated in the General Fund operating budget for various departments, shall be allocated to the Solid Waste Enterprise Fund for funding via revenues and retained earnings.
Motion's been made? Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion on the Solid Waste Enterprise Fund? Seeing none, all is in favor of the Solid Waste Enterprise Fund amendment? All is opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Mr. Costa, you want to wrap it up?
Finance Committee recommends this budget 7-0.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor for the budget in its entirety?
There are, so move for the budget in its entirety.
Motion has been made and seconded. The budget in its entirety is amended, or not amended in this case. This is a- This is a simple majority vote to spend this money. It's the annual town budget.
Mr. Moderator. We do have the money going to the general stabilization, so we'd need a.
No, we clarified that with town council. So the question for Mr. Costa was, there was $5 going into the stabilization fund. Previous state statute required that transfers into and out of the stabilization fund required a 2/3 majority. I'm told by town council for money going in that now it is a simple majority requirement. The statute has changed.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
For the school committee, through the chair, there was a question raised earlier about the Health Department and if we were going to have the right amount of people, specifically nurses, and if there was going to be a health curriculum. And so they said they'll know in two weeks. So how are we going to know what the answer of that is and how will they fund it? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wright. Somebody from the school department want to take a, take a minute to try to answer that the best they can?
The leadership team is finalizing all the positions now as we speak. There have been some recent changes, including in the budget. We've had some personnel changes as well. But, you know, we are working to take the advice from the leadership team and come up with a plan that makes sense educationally for the students. That's where we are right now. That final decision will be presented not at tomorrow's school committee meeting, but at the following school committee meeting.
Thank you very much. Any further debate, questions, comments on the Budget Article Number 6? Seeing no hands, the Budget Article requires a majority to approve it. All those in favor of the budget as amended? All those opposed? That motion carries unanimously. At this time, I think it's getting about 8:15. So I did want to take a minute to recognize Senator Keenan is here, and he's down at the back and working hard for the folks in Holbrook, especially, you know, the tip money is greatly appreciated, and also any other actions you've taken for it. So thank you very much. I don't know if Mark Kusick has made it tonight, but I do want to recognize you before it got too late in the evening. At this time. At this time, we would look for a motion to recess the annual town meeting until such time as the special town meeting is completed and then to reconvene.
So moved?
Motion is moved in second. All those in favor of recessing the annual town meeting? All those opposed? We'll come back to the annual town meeting at the same point we've left at, and I'm going to call the special town meeting to order right now. And we'll start with Article 1, Funding Prior Year Deficit. Mr. Gordon.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer the sum of $85,000 from the amount appropriated for the year-end of June 30th, 2017 under Health Insurance Account 019145173019. Said sum to be transferred to Fund 32 Wayman-Sycamore-Pine Streetlights in order to fund the deficit that occurred from paying down a bond anticipatory note in fiscal year 2016.
Mr. Costa, FinCom recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends acceptance 7-0.
Mr. Gordon, discussion?
Yeah, so this is, this was a new bond anticipatory note in '16, or the first payment was '16. It wasn't budgeted, which resulted in a fund deficit, so this article actually funds the deficit.
Further discussion on Article 1 of the special town meeting? Seeing no hands. This is an interesting vote tally because it involves paying a debt from a prior year. Special state statute requires a 9/10 supermajority to approve this. All of those in favor of Article 1 of the special town meeting as read? Please raise your hands. All those opposed? Seeing that that is carried unanimously, it meets the 9/10 cent requirement, so you've recorded that. Thank you. Mr. Gordon, Article 2 Special.
I move that the town transfer the sum of $85,995 from the fiscal year 2016 sewer retained earnings, account 270003590000. Said sum to be added to the amount appropriated for the fiscal year ending on June 30th, 2017 under Mass Water Resource Authority Assessment.
Motion's moved in second. Mr. Costa, the FinCom recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends passage 7-0.
Thank you. Discussion, Mr. Gordon?
Mr. Moderator, so this is the current year MWRA assessment. The appropriation for this year was based on an estimate, and the actual assessment was greater than the estimate. So this funds that cost.
Further discussion, questions on supplemental MWRA appropriation? Seeing no hands. This is within the current budget year, so that 9/10 special rule doesn't apply. A simple majority is required to pass this. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Mr. Gordon, Article Number 3.
I move no action on Article Number 3.
Mr. Costa?
Finance Committee recommends no action, 7-0.
Okay, the motion on the floor is to take no action on this article. Is there discussion on the subject of taking no action on the article, not on the body of the article itself?
Mr. Moderator, this matter was already covered through the end-of-year transfer process by the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee. Under the provisions of the new Municipal Modernization Act, they are able to transfer end-of-year funds at a higher dollar than they were in the past. And your handouts, actually, for reference purposes, includes a list of all the FY '17 end-of-year transfers performed to date.
Is there any further discussion on the motion to take no action on Article Number Seeing no hands. This is a motion in the negative, so a yes vote means that we take no action, and no vote means that we do not take no action, which is kind of backwards. So all in favor of taking no action? How's that? Is that better? Okay. All those opposed to taking no action? No action is taken on Article Number 3 by unanimous vote. Mr. Gordon, Article 4.
I move the town take no action on Article 4.
Mr. Costa?
Finance Committee recommends no action, 7-0.
Contract's still under negotiation.
Contract is still under negotiations is the reasoning for that. Is there any further discussion on the motion to take no action on Article 4? Again, another motion in the negative. All those in favor of taking no action, raise your hands. All those opposed to taking no action? The motion for no action, the motion in the negative carries unanimously, no action to be taken on Article 4. Mr. Gordon, Article Number 5.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town take no action on Article Number 5.
Motion moved in second. Mr. Costa, FinCom?
Finance Committee recommends no action, 7-0.
Is there discussion on this?
Mr. Moderator, this contract as well is still under negotiation.
Okay, so the contract is still under negotiation. Is there any further discussion, comments, questions on no action on Article Number 5? Seeing no hands. All those in favor of taking no action? All those opposed to taking no action? The motion for no action, the motion in the negative carries unanimously, no action is taken on Article Number 5. Mr. Gordon, Article Number 6.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer the sum of $8,850 from the amount appropriated for the fiscal year ending on June 30th, 2017 under Workers' Comp Account 019455175000. Said sum to be used to pay the cost of a new, other post-employment benefit actuarial report for fiscal year 2017 and 2018.
Motion's moved in second. Mr. Costa?
Finance Committee recommends acceptance 7-0.
Discussion, debate?
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Gordon?
This actuarial report is a requirement every two years under GASB 45, so this article will fund the cost of this report.
Further discussion or debate on Article Number 6 of the special town meeting? Let's get the microphone volume turned up a little bit for us so we can hear you and folks on.
Renee Walker, Precinct 4. I just wanted some clarification. I thought you said it was $8,000, and I was just wondering who's responsible for submitting the report and doing it? And is it always, is it going to be something we have to do every year, and is it always that expensive?
Great, thank you. Mr. Gordon, do you want to try to answer that?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, yeah. Well, I can answer it. It's, it is every two years that it's required, and has been required for some time now, every two years. And that's about, they're typically under $10,000.
You all set with that?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, the Treasurer's Office is responsible for the report.
Any further debate or discussion on this article? Okay, this is also a simple majority article for Article Number 6. All those in favor of Article 6 in the special town meeting? So you raise your hand now if you're in favor of the article, okay, unlike the previous one. All those opposed to Article 6? That motion carries unanimously for Article Number 6. Mr. Gordon, Article Number 7.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town reallocate $150,000 that was previously appropriated and raised by borrowing under Article 15 of the special town meeting held on May 11th, 2016, which sum was initially borrowed to pay cost of redesigning and reconstructing water mains on Pond Street. Said sum to be reallocated to pay for the replacement of the water mains, water services, and hydrants on Richard Road, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto.
Motion made in second. Mr. Costa, the FinCom report?
Finance Committee recommends passage 7-0.
Moderator? Mr. Gordon?
So if you recall, last year, we voted a sum of money to be borrowed for the replacement of the water lines on Pond Street. So there was money left over from that, and the DPW Department has looked at, has a priority list of streets, and Richard Road is the next one on that list. So this, these funds will pay for the replacement of that water line.
Further discussion or debate on Article 7? Ms. Greeley?
Greeley, Precinct 2. I have a question on this because I'm in Precinct 2, and someone who lives there asked about this. They lived on Pond Street, and they were told there wasn't enough money to pave Pond Street, that they needed to use the money for some other project. And I don't know if that's true. Is paving usually comes out of this fund as well?
Thank you, Ms. Greeley.
My understanding is that the paving would more than likely come out of our Chapter 90 money. But I can look into it and get back to you.
Further discussion or debate on Article Number 7 of the special town meeting warrant for Richard Road Water Project? Seeing none, this is a majority vote to pass. All those in favor of the article as printed to reallocate the funds? All those opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Mr. Gordon, Article Number 8.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer the sum of $6,841 from the amount appropriated for the fiscal year ending on June 30th, 2017 under Public Library salaries, account Said sum to be used for electrical repairs to be done at the Holbrook Public Library, 2 Plymouth Street, Holbrook, Mass.
Mr. Costa, the FinCom report?
Finance Committee recommends acceptance 7-0.
So discussion on Article 8?
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Gordon?
These repairs will replace the components within the electrical panels at the library. There are four panels, and this was a recommendation from our wiring inspector as to how to upgrade these panels.
Any further discussions on Article Number 8? This is a majority vote. All is in favor of Article Number 8? All is opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Mr. Gordon, Article Number 9.
I move that the town transfer the sum of $3,690 from the amount appropriated for the fiscal year ending on June 30th, 2017 under Public Library salaries, 016105114-000. Said sum to be used to pay mutual fence for the installation of a security fence around the outside stairwell of the Holbrook Public Library, 2 Plymouth Street, Holbrook, Mass.
Motion has been made? Motion has been made in second. Mr. Costa, the FinCom?
The Finance Committee recommends acceptance of this 7-0, but there will be a follow-up motion to strike some words, and we support that 7-0.
Discussion on the main article, or does somebody want to present your amendment?
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to present an amendment to this article. I move to amend the motion as follows, striking the words "mutual fence."
Okay, so the moderator, okay, so the moderator has a copy of the article of the motion here that's been made. Motion is made in second, did the debate moves to whether or not we should strike the words "mutual fence" from the article that's printed in the, the motion's printed in the warrant? Is there any discussion on this?
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Gordon?
So the library initially got a price estimate for this work. However, they're getting other price estimates. So we're not saying it won't be mutual fence, but we don't want to lock ourselves in in this article by saying that it will be mutual fence.
Any further discussion? We get a microphone for you, or?
Hi, Denise Ryan, Precinct 1. I'm just kind of curious what the fence is for, considering all the years it's never been there. And if it's a safety fence, I'm considering it's probably going to be a locked access. And how is that safe for the people within the basement?
Thank you. Good questions, Ms. Ryan. Let's see if we can get somebody to try to answer those.
Mr. Moderator, I'd ask our librarian, Donald Cologne, to come on up.
Mr. Cologne?
Mr. Moderator, the security fence is actually going to be a six-foot-high fence that will go around the outside stairwell of the library, which it provides an emergency exit from the lower-level meeting room. There is no access to the stairwell from the outside. We would need a key. From the access from the stairs, it is a push bar. So individuals that are in a meeting room, if they do need to access the building, they'll be able to do so with no problems.
Thank you, Mr. Cologne. Any further discussion or questions on the amendment? The amendment, again, we're trying to keep in the motion for the amendment. That's a little bit out of scope to talk about the fence. We should be talking about the mutual fence, but we'll let that one slide, okay? Is there any further discussion on the motion to amend by striking the words "mutual fence" from the original motion as presented in the motion? Seeing none, there's a majority to pass the motion to amend, so we'll take up the motion to amend. All those in favor of amending the original motion by striking the words "mutual fence", raise your hands. And all those opposed? There's nobody here for mutual fence. Okay, well, I will move back to debate on the main motion, which, you know, thank you for this example and problematic procedure, Ms. Ryan, because this is where I should have had you ask your question. But that's okay, we learned a lot. Is there any further discussion on the motion as amended? This is a simple majority vote. All those in favor of this Article Number 9, yeah, we're up to 9, as amended, so it includes the striking of mutual fence? Please raise your hand. All those opposed? The motion as amended carries unanimously. Mr. Gordon, we'll move to Article Number 10, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer the sum of $13,509 from the amount appropriated for the fiscal year ending on June 30th, 2017 under Health Insurance Account 019145173019 in order to purchase 15 tactical vests and 15 tactical helmets, also known as active shooter kits, including 10 kits for the Holbrook Police Department and five kits for the Holbrook Fire Department.
Motion is moved in second, and Mr. Costa?
Finance Committee recommends passage 5 in favor, one against, and one abstention.
Discussion?
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Gordon?
This type of equipment has sadly become critical for our local law enforcement officers.
Okay, is there further discussion, deliberation, debate on this article?
Mike Siega, Precinct 2. I feel that this capital request should go through our Capital Planning Committee. There's a motion forthcoming for the Capital Planning Committee to review any capital requests that are greater than $10,000 with a longevity of greater than three years. And the purpose of that committee is to review all capital requests, not only the merit of the specific request, and I say this with sincere deference to the chief, but putting that in relation to all the capital requests that the town needs to consider. And so I would request that this go through that process as opposed to being approved this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Siega. We do offer, I just want to clarify, the podium up here, there's no special power that anybody has by standing at that podium. They're a town meeting member, same as you, or a town official. Just there, the microphone is a little closer, so that's why they're grabbing that one. Is there any further discussion?
Clarification, Renee Walker, Precinct 4. Just some clarification. If we, what's the difference? If we approve it now, the money will get it. If we approve it now, the money will get it, and they can purchase these items immediately. If we did the other process where you go through this, the Finance Committee Subcommittee, how long does that process take? And if it was approved, how long would it take fire and police to receive that equipment, or receive the funding for the equipment?
Okay, thank you, Ms. Walker. Would you like, Mr. Gordon, you'd like to try to field that one?
Sure. So typically, the Capital Improvement Committee, their process evolves around our budget process. So they'll start meeting in December to propose a plan for the next fiscal year.
Ms. Walker, you all set? You got what you need? Okay. Further discussion?
I just want to add a point real quick. I definitely agree with my colleague in terms of, ideally, this would have gone to the Capital Planning Committee. Unfortunately, because of, it doesn't meet the current bylaw standard is one of the issues of why it didn't go through the current Capital Planning Committee. And the other one is the exigent circumstances and timing of getting these as soon as possible for police and firefighter life and safety. So with those, that's why we ended up recommending it. But normally, and going forward, we do recommend that every capital project should be going to the Capital Improvement Planning Committee before it comes to town meeting floor. And in the future, unless an emergency situation, we would not support it unless it's gone through that capital planning process. Thank you.
Further discussion on Article Number Ten, special town meeting?
Just to clarify, so what would likely happen? It would be brought up a year from now for a vote as part of the capital improvement plan? If not voted.
Okay, is that clear? You backed away from the microphone at the end. Did everybody hear that?
If not voted tonight, it would end up being a year from now that it would be voted.
Further discussion or debate on special town meeting, Article Ten, tactical equipment? Hearing none, this is a majority vote. All those in favor of Article Ten? All those opposed? This article carries unanimously? Oh, I'm sorry, we had two opposed. Did I get all the opposition? Okay, there's two opposed. The article carries by a simple majority. Mr. Costa, you're going to do? You're going to read Article Eleven?
Would you indulge me to combine eleven, twelve, and thirteen as all no action?
No, let's just rip them quick.
Okay. Article Eleven, I move no action on Article Eleven.
Motion made in second of FinCom?
Recommend no action, seven zero.
Further discussion on Article Eleven? Motion in the negative, all those in favor of taking no action on Article Eleven? All those opposed? Mr. Costa, Article Number Twelve.
Mr. Moderator, I move no action on Article Twelve.
Motion moved in second. Is there further discussion on taking no action, sir? Let's get the audio turned on, Zach. Thanks.
Hi, Ron Kaplan, Precinct Four. One of the concerns that I have is if we, if we take no action on this, we're going to lose the talent that we have. I mean, this position is the, he, our, this is the tax collector one, correct?
No, actually, we're on, in the special town meeting, Article Twelve.
Are we on the wrong one?
Well, there's two, there's two meetings, and we've got the annual and the special.
Never mind. Sorry about that.
You got over your butterflies, anyway, and you'll be able to speak when we get back to the, to the annual. That's fine. I make worse mistakes up here myself. That's great. Okay, is any further discussion on the motion for no action on Article Twelve? Which is, this is to take no action on adding funds to the capital's stabilization. Maybe you'd like to explain why we can't add or why we're moving no action?
We have no money.
That's never stopped me before.
These are placeholders that we have at the end of every town meeting warrant, in case available funds happen to come up or we need to actually spend funds for an emergency situation. We have these here, placeholders. At this point, there is no funds available for the last three.
Scratch tickets didn't pan out?
No.
Okay. All those in favor of taking no action, this is a motion in the negative. All those opposed to taking no action? No action is taken on Article Number Twelve. Mr. Costa, Article Thirteen.
I move the town take no action on Article Thirteen.
Motion is made in second, and further discussion on the motion for no action on Article Number Thirteen? Seeing no hands, all is in favor of taking no action. Motion in the negative on Article Thirteen, all is opposed to taking no action. No action is taken on Article Number Thirteen.
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Costa.
Can I make a motion to dissolve the special town meeting and return to the annual town meeting?
Motion has been made in second to dissolve, and I wanted to make a comment on the dissolve the town meeting. This is the correct way to end a town meeting and seal it. If you're going to adjourn it, you should adjourn it without date. To adjourn a town meeting or a special town meeting implies it's going to start again at some other point in time. To dissolve it means it's over, finished, done. So this is the correct motion. Any discussion on the motion to dissolve the special town meeting? Seeing none, all is in favor of dissolving the special town meeting and returning to the annual town meeting, raising hands, all opposed? That motion carries. Let us go back to see where we are. I think we're starting at Article Seven in the annual town meeting, which is reconvened as per the motion to recess. Mr. Gordon, Article Seven. Just some quick comments coming up. And looking ahead and just kind of getting the timeline. A lot of articles that are coming up are no action. There's probably about twenty articles here, pretty close to half of them are no action. So we should be, we should be moving out of here probably right around ten or somewhere around there, I think, maybe a little. It depends how things go. I'm one thing, sir. I just try to set your expectations. Mr. Gordon, Article Seven.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town raise and appropriate, borrow, transfer from available funds and/or otherwise provide a sum of money not to exceed $498,829 for the reconstruction and improvement of accepted town roads authorized by the Mass Department of Transportation under Mass General Act, Chapter Ninety, with reimbursement from MassDOT under Mass General Act, Chapter Ninety, Section Thirty-four, or such other funding sources from MassDOT.
Motion's been made in second. Mr. Costa.
Finance Committee recommends acceptance, seven zero.
Discussion.
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Gordon.
So this is similar to a prior article, but this, relating to Chapter Ninety, this particular one allows us to borrow funds to pay for, in advance, for Chapter Ninety projects because Chapter Ninety is a cost reimbursement program.
Further discussion or debate on this Article Number Seven in the annual town meeting warrant? Seeing none, state law requires that when you borrow money as a town, a two-thirds majority of the town meeting members must vote in the affirmative in order to do that. So it's not a simple majority. We need a two-thirds majority. We'll take a vote now. All those in favor of Article Seven? All those opposed to Article Seven? Note, clerk, that the Article Seven requiring two-thirds majority passes unanimously. Two-thirds count is waived. Mr. Gordon, Article Number Eight.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town amend the town bylaws, Section Ten, Salary Administration Plan, Article Three, Section Ten Point Five G, Schedule B, by raising the following maximum rates of pay on the FY18 Wage and Salary Schedule. Principal Assessor, eighty-five thousand annually. Animal Control Officer, forty thousand annually. Public Safety Dispatch, part-time, twenty dollars hourly. Special Officers, twenty dollars hourly.
Motion has been made in second, and let's hear from the Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends the updated plan, four in favor, zero against, two abstentions.
Discussion.
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Gordon.
So changes here are based on a review of what other communities are paying for animal control, dispatch, and special officers. The assessor increase is, is to allow for a two percent pay raise where he was right up against the max there.
So discussion, debate, questions on Article Number Eight in the annual town warrant? Ms. Walker?
Sorry. We just voted on the budget. Is this covered in the budget? Or if we vote yes on this, is that going to mess up the budget next year? Is this already paid for?
Excellent question. Thank you.
So technically, Article Eight does not fund anything. It has no, it has no dollar amount associated with it. However, Article Nine, the next article, will be funding the changes that, or some of the changes that were listed here. As we do with all contracts that are not, and salaries that are not in place at the time of the budget process, and they have to still come to town meeting, they're not included in the budget that was already passed. So this is available when we get to Article Nine. Let me, Moderator. If we went to Article Nine, which is the funding, the funds are available from the raise and appropriate, which will be the motion to actually fund the increases that are there.
Further questions or debate on Article Number Eight? Seeing none, this is a majority vote. All those in favor of Article Eight? All those opposed? One opposed? Two opposed? Did I miss anybody? Okay, Article Eight carries by a simple majority, with two opposed. Mr. Gordon, Article Number Nine.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town raise and appropriate the sum of $20,565.25, said some to be used to provide pay raises, pay adjustments, new positions, and any other benefits resulting from amendments to the Salary Administration Plan and amendments to any employment agreements negotiated by the Board of Selectmen, and to authorize the town accountant to allocate such payments and the transfer of any portion of said sum to any department budget where it may be required for payment of the after said.
Motion has been made in second by Mr. Costa. Mr. Costa, FinCom?
Finance Committee recommends, four in favor, none against, two abstentions.
Thank you. So discussion or debate on Article Nine?
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Gordon.
This schedule was approved by the Board of Selectmen. It mostly includes two percent pay increases, with the exception of those that were adjusted, discussed in the prior, the prior article.
Discussion, debate, questions on Article Number Nine? Seeing no hands, this requires a simple majority to pass the amounts during the current year. All those in favor of Article Number Nine? And all is opposed to Article Number Nine? I have two opposed. That carries by a simple majority, with two opposed. Thank you. So Article Nine does carry. Mr. Gordon, we move to Article Number Ten.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town take no action on Article Ten.
Motion has been made in second to take no action on Article Ten. Mr. Costa?
Finance Committee recommends no action, seven zero.
So discussion.
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Gordon.
Again, this contract is still under negotiation.
I'm sorry. No, you're on Article Number Ten. So the previous article, just to be clear, previous article was Nine, which funded the Wage and Salary Amendment Plan. And the article we're on now is Article Ten, which is collective bargaining agreement funding for the Public Works Union? Is, did we miss something? Or is there any lack of clarity on which article we're on? I want to make sure we're casting votes on the right thing. And we'll go back and do it again if need be. Okay, good. Any further discussion on Article Ten? The motion on the floor is to take no action on that. This being a motion in the negative, all is in favor of taking no action, raise your hands. All those opposed to taking no action? That motion carries unanimously. No action is thereby taken on Article Number Ten. Mr. Gordon, Article Number Eleven, this is clerical union?
That's correct. I move that the town take no action on Article Eleven.
Motion's been made in second. Mr. Costa?
Finance Committee recommends no action, seven zero.
Discussion.
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Gordon.
This contract is still under negotiation.
Again, any further discussion or debate on Article Number Eleven? This is a motion in the negative, all is in favor of taking no action on Article Eleven? All is opposed to taking no action? Motion carries unanimously, and the negative, no action is taken on Article Number Eleven. Mr. Gordon, we're on Article Number Twelve, Salary Increase for the Town Treasurer Collector on Page Four of this annual town meeting warrant.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer the sum of $10,140 from the amount appropriated for the fiscal year ending on June 30, 2018, under Health Insurance, 019145173019, said some to be added to the Treasurer Collector's salary line, 011455111-000, for the fiscal year ending on June 30, 2018, in order to provide a pay increase for the elected Town Treasurer Collector.
Motion's been made in second, and Mr. Gordon, Article Twelve, your FinCom recommendations here.
So there was a motion to support this article that only received one yes vote, two no votes, and three abstentions.
So I'm kind of confused. What's the recommendation of the FinCom?
We did not support this.
Okay, thank you. All right, here we're on the right page.
Okay.
And he's all warmed up, too.
One of the concerns is...
Just repeat your name and your precinct.
Yes, Ron Kaplan, Precinct Four. Page two. One of the concerns is, is that those that work in our town, they, they need to be compensated fairly so that they can maintain the standard of life that we all want to have. We're not talking giant salaries here. If you look at the comparisons over the, the sheet that was provided, our town is, is paying this position significantly lower than everybody else. And in order to keep and maintain qualified individuals and to attract additional individuals to want to do this, you have to make it attractive financially also because you just, as much as people want to do it, if they can't, if they can't do it based on financial constraints, it precludes them from the pool of applicants that would want to take this position. I would ask that, ladies and gentlemen, would support this position. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion or debate on Article Twelve?
Angela Krim, Precinct One. I'd like to know why FinCom does not recommend passage of this article, if they may.
Thank you. Yeah, it was kind of a split vote, so maybe one for each side or synopsis?
This was actually submitted as part of the budget. So this was discussed on several occasions through, through the budget process as well as this article specifically. There, I don't want to speak for every member of the committee, but I think there was two, two issues that came up. One is the size of the increase is a significant increase. And even though there hasn't been an increase in that, for that position for three years, even on a reasonable annualized increase, that's still a significant increase. So that was one of, some of the members. Myself personally, I think that your, the statements that the gentleman just made are very perfect for why you should have an elected treasurer collector, which did not pass at the last election.
Keep it with the scope of the article, which is...
That's why, this is part of the reasoning of why we...
Narrow it down just a little bit for me.
Sure. So part of the reasoning is, we have an appointed position that was just elected to that position. This was the salary in place at that time. There is a stipend for certification for that position. Hasn't been, hasn't been achieved yet. And really, the, believe that the pay is appropriate for the work that's done in that office today.
Thank you. Sir?
William Forty, Precinct Three. Mr. Moderator, could someone answer me what the current salary of the treasurer collector is right now?
Thank you. I believe it's printed in the budget, but if anybody has a number off the top of their head?
$66,046 for one thousand of that as a stipend for certification. So $65,046 is the base salary.
Thank you. Further debate or questions, miss?
Hello, Linda Austin, Precinct One. Gee, it's my sense that there ought to be more parity with the assessor's salary that we just increased a max to $85,000. So I do support the increase for the treasurer collector.
Thank you, Ms. Austin. Any further discussion, debates, or comment on this article? Okay, we'll move to a vote on Article Number Twelve, the salary increase for the town treasurer collector. This requires a simple majority. All those in favor of this increase, please raise your hand. All is opposed to this increase, please raise your hand. The chair is in doubt. We'd like to ask the towers to come and make a count on this vote here. All those in favor, could you please rise and remain standing until your vote is counted? Have we got all the folks up front? Okay, good. Please be seated. All those opposed? Please stand, remain standing until your vote is counted. Again, no extra charge for the exercise. You could use a stretch at this point. Thank you. Please be seated. Count the tally up here. Okay, the tally is in on Article Twelve. There are ninety-six, being ninety-six in favor, and forty-four opposed, and the motion requiring a majority, the motion does carry. Okay, the, there's two things you're asking here, right? You're asking, first of all, okay, when you question, a count is not questionable or something that's actual, actually debatable under the Town Meeting Times rules. So if it was a standing vote only, you could question that count, or you could question the moderator's decision that was a majority. If a count has been taken and enumerated, you can't question that. You do have the right later on to ask for reconsideration of an article if you think something's changed, but you know, I'm inclined to say that this one passed based on the numbers. Any questions? You can challenge the county tellers, no. You can move for reconsideration, which, or rescission, either of those would require us to reopen the article again and move forward. You know, it's certainly up to you, but a counted vote, and we had this discussion come up at past meeting, and I did some research on it. That's why I've got that one down pretty good. Okay? Again, on Article Number Twelve, the motion to increase the salary for the Town Treasurer Collector by $10,140, that passes with ninety-six in favor and forty-four opposed. Mr. Gordon, we're moving to Article Number Thirteen.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer $32,624 from the Capital Improvement Trust Fund, account eighty, 0003580000, and $69,869 from the Capital Improvement Stabilization Fund, eight, zero, 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 three, five, nine, zero, 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 one, for a total sum of $102,493 to be deposited in Fund Forty, the Capital Improvement Fund.
Mr. Costa, FinCom? We're on thirteen.
Finance Committee recommends passage, seven zero.
Mr. Gordon?
Mr. Moderator, this article moves funds from the Capital Trust Fund and the Capital Stabilization Fund to help fund our capital improvement plan for fiscal year eighteen.
Further discussion or debate on annual town meeting, Article Number Thirteen? Seeing no hands. This motion requires a majority to pass. All those in favor of Article Thirteen? Oops, I'm sorry. Was there a discussion? I think the quantum was marked this, but let me take a recess and talk to council real quick. Thank you for point of order. There was an error in the original sheet that describes the quantum vote. This Article Number Thirteen does require a two-thirds majority vote. Again, by state law, this is money coming out of a stabilization fund, and that's the reason why two-thirds majority is required to carry that. All those in favor of Article Thirteen in the annual town meeting warrant? All those opposed to Article Thirteen? That motion carries unanimously. There is no need to come for a two-thirds majority there. Mr. Gordon, Article Fourteen?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town approve the purchase and/or lease purchase of capital items for fiscal year 2018 totaling $332,661, as recommended in the FY18 Capital Improvement Report of the Capital Improvement Planning Committee.
Mr. Costa?
Finance Committee recommends acceptance of the capital plan, seven zero.
Mr. Gordon?
Mr. Moderator, the plan is included in the town meeting handouts as Item D. New purchases for FY18 include IV pumps for the fire department, a dispatch vehicle, and a John Deere tractor for the schools. The remainder of the funds is for payments on items purchased or leased in prior years.
Discussions or questions on Article Fourteen? Hearing none. Before we go to vote, I'm just going to take a minute to confer with council. I think the typo was that this was switched with the previous one. I'm going to check on that. Yes, so we found the problem with the prior article, which was two-thirds. The, there was a typo in the, in the quantum sheet. So this article actually requires a majority. It was originally marked as two-thirds required. That's the question I had for council. All those in favor of Article Number Fourteen, capital improvements? All those opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Mr. Gordon, we move to Article Number Fifteen?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town amend the Town of Holbrook General Town Bylaw as Section Two dash fifteen, capital improvements, by striking the current Section Two and inserting a new Section Two in its place, as printed in the warrant, striking the words, or take any other action thereon.
Motion's been moved in second. Mr. Costa, FinCom?
Finance Committee recommends acceptance of this bylaw change, six zero.
Mr. Gordon?
Mr. Moderator, this, this article proposes three changes to, to our capital improvement bylaw. First, it reduces the capital item threshold from $35,000 to $10,000. This will provide us with better oversight on equipment purchases and equipment needs. Second, it reduces the useful life of the assets from five years to three years. And finally, and this one's the most complicated, it eliminates a sentence that requires all capital improvements to be voted by the Capital Improvement Committee. The removal of this sentence was highly recommended by our bond counsel, Locke Lord. This sentence has been problematic for bond counsel in instances where we have borrowed capital funds for purposes that do not typically go through the Capital Improvement Committee. For example, school building project, Chapter Ninety, building and roads project, building projects, water projects. And when we go to borrow, we have to provide a significant amount of paperwork to, for the borrowing, and it goes through our bond counsel. And on three occasions in the past three or four years, they have come back and said, you got a problem with your bylaw. You need to, we'll let you have the Capital Improvement Committee meet and vote on it, but really, it should be done in sequence before town meeting. And they said, when are you going to change that? You need to change that and remove that sentence. So this change will accomplish those three, those three objectives.
Discussion or debate on Article Number Fifteen? Mr. Costa?
One could, one could say it's not the bylaw that needs to be changed, it was the process that needed to be changed. But at this point, the Finance Committee, again, does support this, but we do want to stress that this doesn't mean that we expect department heads to submit articles for capital projects to subvert the Capital Improvement Planning Committee. They should still be going through that process, and town meetings should be holding them accountable to make sure that projects go through the Capital Planning Committee. This is really to help bond counsel for major borrowings and things that would come to town meeting for a two-thirds vote anyway, to kind of clean that up. But that's the reason. Thank you.
Further discussion, questions, debate on Article Fifteen? Hearing none. This requires a majority vote to pass. All those in favor of Article Fifteen? All those opposed to Article Fifteen? I see one opposed. That carries by simple majority with one opposed. Okay, Mr. Gordon, we're going to look at Article Sixteen?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town amend the Town of Holbrook General Town Bylaws by striking the current Section Two dash Twelve Single Audit and inserting in its place a new Section Two dash Twelve Single Audit, as printed in the warrant, striking the words or take any other action thereon.
Motion has been made in seconded. Mr. Costa?
We recommend acceptance of this, six zero, as well as the motion you're about to hear, six zero.
Mr. Gordon, you?
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to offer an amendment to this article.
Go ahead.
I move to amend the motion as follows. Change the Uniform Single Audit Act of 1984 to the Uniform Single Audit Act of 1996.
The motion to amend has been made, and the amendment is to change the wording in the original motion from the Uniform Single Audit Act of 1984 to read the Uniform Single Audit Act of 1996, sort of a Back to the Future kind of thing. So debate will be on the, first on a motion to amend. Is there any debate or discussion about the motion to amend by changing that line?
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Gordon?
This is a typo.
Okay. Any further discussions on the alleged typo? Okay, so let's vote first on the amendment. This is a majority vote to amend the article. It does not pass the article, it just amends it by changing the words. Then we'll move to talk about the main article itself. All those in favor of the motion to amend? All those opposed? Motion is amended. We'll move to discussion on the main motion. Mr. Gordon?
Mr. Moderator, this bylaw change brings our bylaws into compliance with the Single Audit Act of 1996, which requires an audit of federal funds annually, not biannually, which was the old act.
Any further discussions, questions? Okay, this is a simple majority to approve Article Number Sixteen? All those in favor of Article Sixteen? All those opposed? Okay, motion carries unanimously on Article Number Sixteen. Mr. Gordon, Article Number Seventeen?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town take no action on Article Seventeen.
Motion has been moved in second for no action. Mr. Costa, the FinCom?
Finance Committee recommends no action, six in favor, zero against.
Mr. Gordon, can you tell us about this one?
Sure. Mr. Moderator, so the intent to create these revolving funds was negated. We ended up budgeting within the actual budgets for these departments, for the library and for animal control, the amounts being requested in the revolving fund. So these, these amounts have been included in the respective budgets, and we are no longer interested in establishing these revolving funds.
Further discussion on the motion for no action on Article Number, Article Seventeen? Seeing none. All those in favor of no action, taking no action on Article Seventeen? All those opposed to taking no action? The motion, okay, we have one opposed to taking no action? Was that correct? So the motion carries by majority with one opposed to taking no action. No action is taken on Article Seventeen. Mr. Gordon, Article Eighteen?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town take no action on Article Eighteen.
Motion's been made in second to Mr. Costa, FinCom?
Finance Committee also recommends no action, six, four, zero against.
Mr. Gordon?
Mr. Moderator, same reasoning, reasoning as the prior one. This, this article would have funded the revolving funds that we would have been setting up in the prior article, so.
Further discussion on the motion for no action? Seeing none. On Article Number, back to the other page, Article Eighteen? All those in, this is a motion in the negative, again, all is in favor of taking no action, raise your hands. All those opposed to taking no action? That motion carries unanimously. Mr. Gordon, we'll move to Article Number Nineteen?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town take no action on Article Nineteen?
Mr. Costa?
Finance Committee recommends no action, seven zero.
Motion made in second for no action. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Gordon?
The intent of this article was to allow the Council on Aging to retain money collected through the fees that they charge for the use of the facility. It's not a lot of money, but when people use the building, they'll pay a small, small sum. And you'd use the fees to maintain the building. However, the Department of Revenue has opined that this statute is not to be used for hourly rental arrangements, but rather for leasehold interest. So if the town owned a building and was leasing out portions of it or the whole thing to a third party, then this type of fund would be appropriate. But given the circumstances of the, the article, it is not.
Further discussion on Article Nineteen? Seeing none. Motion is in the negative. Majority will make no action on Article Nineteen. All those in favor of taking no action on Article Nineteen? All those opposed to taking no action on Article Nineteen? No action is carried unanimously on Article Number Nineteen. Mr. Gordon, Article Twenty?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town take no action on Article Twenty.
Moved in second, and Mr. Costa?
Finance Committee recommends no action, six zero.
Further discussion?
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Gordon?
The establishment of this type of fund does not require a town meeting vote.
Mr. Costa?
I know everybody's getting a little glassy-eyed. We had a lot of no actions there. I just want to commend the, the new town accountant. A lot of these were placed on the town meeting warrant because they were things that we were either doing but didn't have authorization to do, or needed to have done. So I just want to commend her. I know that there's a lot of no actions here, but it's, there's a reason that they were on the town meeting warrant and reviewed. Thank you.
Any further discussion on Article Twenty? In the Article Twenty, the motion on the floor is to take no action. Seeing no hands. All those in favor of taking no action, motions in the negative. All those opposed? No action is taken by unanimous vote on Article Number Twenty? Mr. Gordon, on to Article Twenty-one?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to supplement each prior vote of the town that authorizes the borrowing of money to pay cost of capital projects to provide that in accordance with Massachusetts General laws, Chapter Forty-four, Section Twenty, as amended, the premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes, thereunder less any such premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to pay project costs, and the amount authorized to be borrowed for each such project shall be reduced by the amount of any such premium so applied.
Motion has been moved in seconded by Mr. Gordon. Mr. Costa, the FinCom recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends passage, seven in favor, zero against.
So discussion on Article Number Twenty-one?
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Gordon?
So I'm going to, I'm going to try to explain this, but I got Beth on the hook here if I go, I go astray. So the Modernization Act of 2016, which was a state statute, prior to that, the money coming in, in the form of premiums, unless otherwise voted, would fall into the general fund. What this article does is it requires that either A, those funds, the premium coming in, stays with the project, either to pay down future borrowing or to pay project costs, or it allows you to pay for other types of borrowing. It would still, it would still require a town meeting vote, but you could use it for other types of borrowing for a project with an equal or a longer life. And if you recall, we had to take a similar vote with the school building project to make sure that that premium stayed within the project. So it's, it's the same, it's the same concept.
Discussion, debate questions on Article Twenty-one? Seeing no hands. This is a majority to pass Article Twenty-one. All is in favor? All is opposed? Motion to carry them, motions carried on Article Twenty-one unanimously. Mr. Costa, you're reading Twenty-two?
Yes. I move the town accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Forty, Section Thirteen D, as amended, to establish a reserve fund for the future payment of accrued liabilities for compensated absences due any employee or full-time officer of the town upon the termination of the employee, employees or full-time officer's employment, and further designate the town accountant as a municipal official to authorize payments from this fund.
Mr. Costa, you have discussion to start off?
Finance Committee recommends acceptance of this four, one, one. This is similar to the OPEB trust fund that we established a couple of years ago and began funding. Currently, I believe our liability is approximately $1.5 million for uncompensated absences. So these are sick leave buybacks, basically, that happen every year. And in almost every union contract, in just about every, every personnel contract, there's a sick leave buyback provision that can be sizable. And that's a big liability on the town. This allows us annually to start understanding what that is and then funding for that liability more as a, a portion of the salary. There was no intent at this time to fund this, but this is just to establish the fund so then we can start to, next year, start to look at funding it and putting money in to offset that huge liability that's out there.
Any questions or debate on Article Twenty-two? Mrs. Sigga?
Mike Sigga, Precinct Two. The counter-
The counterargument to this is to keep this amount within the line item of each department so that they can expense it through their own budget, as opposed to having a separate budget with which to access the funds from. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sigga. Mr. Gordon, you wish to speak to?
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Moderator. So just to sort of echo what, what Kevin was saying, so this, this will actually allow us to, A, put money aside for these purposes, but, but what, what, the, the other thing that it does is it allows, allows for better trending of budgets. So right now, if you have a department budget that has a, funds in there for post-retirement sick leave buyback or something, well, that's what it would be, you might, if you look at it over the course of a few years, you might get a blip in that, and then it will come back down. So it kind of distorts the ability to really analyze and track growth in, in salary budgets over time.
Further discussion, any questions, Ms. Wright?
Sue Wright, Precinct 1. Are we still, excuse me, are we still requiring town employees that are going to be retiring to give us the notice that they do?
Thank you, Ms. Wright.
So the, the funding mechanism for, in all of the contracts that I've seen, there is a requirement that if they don't give us notice, then they have to wait until the next funding is available to actually get their sick leave buyback. But there's, obviously, nothing precludes an employee from retiring at their whim whenever they choose, but if they do decide at that whim, then we don't have to necessarily fund that until the next funding, funding is available.
Further comments or discussion on Article 22? Seeing no hands, Article 22 requires a majority vote. Article 22 is moved, all is in favor of the motion? All is opposed? I have two, three, four, five opposed. Make sure I get, okay. Motion carries by a majority with five opposed. Article 22 does, does carry a motion, Article 22. Mr. Gordon, Article 23?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town accept the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 41, Section 111F, as amended, which would allow the town to establish and appropriate amounts to be, amounts to a special injury leave indemnity fund for payment of injury, leave, compensation, or medical bills incurred under this section or Section 100, and may deposit into such fund any amount received from insurance proceeds or restitution for injuries to firefighters or police officers. The monies in the special funds may be expended with the approval of the chief executive officer and without further appropriation for paying expenses incurred under this section or said Section 100, including but not limited to expenses associated with paying compensation other than salary to injured firefighters or police officers and providing replacement services for the injured firefighters or police officers in lieu of or in addition to any amounts appropriated for the compensation of such replacements. Any balance in the fund shall carry over from year to year unless special amounts are released to general fund by the chief executive officer upon a finding that the amounts released are not immediately necessary for the purpose of the funds and not required for expenses in the foreseeable future.
Motion is made in second, and Mr. Costa, will you hear the FinCom recommendation?
FinCom recommends six, zero.
Further discussion on this article?
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Gordon?
That's a, that's a long motion. However, the bottom line is the town currently accounts for OJI costs in accordance with the provisions of this article. Adopting this provision is more of a housekeeping matter.
Sir?
John McFadden, Precinct 4. Just wondering, just trying to get clarification, who the chief executive officer referred to in this?
Thank you for your question.
Mr. Moderator, that, that would be the chairman of the board of selectmen.
Mr. John, we're here.
Tom Haskins, Precinct 4. Does the law require we adopt this? Are we just abiding by the law or is it optional?
Thank you, Ms. Haskins.
It's required.
Further debate or questions on this article? Seeing no hands, Article 22, or actually, we're on 21? 22. 23, wow. It's getting to be a late night here. We're, we're doing actually better than I thought, though. Maybe you guys are, I'm not. Any further, there's no further hands on Article 23, anyway. And this is a simple majority to carry now that I've got the right article. And so, all in favor of the motion is red, and all those opposed to the motion is red. I see one opposed, motion carries by simple majority with one opposed. Okay, so let's go to move on to Article number 24.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town take no action on Article 24.
Mr. Costa?
Finance Committee recommends no action, six in favor, zero against.
Further discussion on why there's no action on Article 25?
Mr. Moderator? Implementation of this type of revolving fund would require significant effort to set up proper procedures and controls. So we'd rather get our new software system in place and operating before taking, taking this type of a, a challenge on.
Any further discussion or questions? You see, the motion on the floor is in the negative for Article 24. All those in favor of taking no action on Article 24? All those opposed to taking no action? I have one opposed. Okay, carries by simple majority with one opposed, Article 24. Mr. Gordon, Article 25?
I move that the town accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 64L, Section 2, as amended, which imposes a local sales tax upon the sale of restaurant meals originating within the town by a vendor at a rate of 0.75% of the gross receipts of the vendor from sale at restaurant meals unless the sale is exempt under Section 6 of Chapter 64H.
Moved in second, and just as a matter of procedure, the original motion in the motion sheet says no action. However, there's action being taken. Can we have a copy of your motion, please?
Article 25? Recommend acceptance.
Okay, so the sheet that I have is a couple of days previous. So does everybody's sheet that they have, have the motion that Mr. Costa made in it? Mine doesn't. Okay. All right, so you understand them? No, I'm, I'm good. Sometimes I print these up a night or two before and, and I want to make sure that the motion is correct and it's read into the record right, otherwise it has no force. So very good, okay, so that's all set? And you're moving this forward? Okay, Mr. Costa, the FinCom recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends acceptance five to one.
May I speak to this? Sure. Mr. Costa?
So we are one of three communities within the surrounding 50 communities that do not have this in place now. All of our abutting communities, all of our budding, abutting communities have this in place. And if you go to any one of the restaurants or get any prepared meals in any of those towns, you're actually paying for their town to run. However, when their citizens come to our town or get food delivered from our town, they're not paying that tax. This, the idea of this is to offset the property tax burden. We are not getting, as I mentioned earlier, state aid is actually down year over year. We need to look at other sources of revenue. This does not, does not impact businesses in a, in a negative way. It's 0.75%. So on a $10 bill, it's 7.5 cents that you would see as a tax. And as I said, you're already paying this in all of our surrounding towns and surrounding, surrounding towns and surrounding, surrounding, surrounding towns. So this just puts us in line with them and helps to offset the, the tech, property tax burden. Thank you.
So any further discussion?
If this is a tax that's going into place to help alleviate the burden of our property taxes, what, what, what amount of refund will we be getting on our property taxes and how much will they be going down?
Thank you, sir. Okay, does anyone want to try to field that one? All right, Mr. Moore?
Yeah, Matt Moore, Selectmen, Precinct 1. I feel that this tax is punitive. I don't have the figures.
Okay, um, let's have, there's a point of order being raised that they can't hear at the back of the room.
Is this better?
Raise the mic up a little bit, maybe?
Great, Matt Moore, Precinct 1.
Is that, can folks hear now? Okay, thank you.
I, I don't have stats. I don't know how many people from outside the community come to Holbrook to, to dine here, even though we have some fantastic establishments. You know, my feeling is that this is a punitive tax that's just going to hurt the local citizens who, you know, as we all know, we're paying more than our fair share. And if we can give any kind of relief by not putting an excess tax on the citizens, I think we have an opportunity to do that, and we should so.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. I, I know your question hasn't been answered. This, I, I don't know if there's anybody that wants to take a stab at that. Okay, that's fair. Okay, yeah, sure, fine.
Tim Simpson, Precinct 2. I agree that meal tax in Holbrook doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me. We don't have that many restaurants. Actually, there are about four, if you want to call them restaurants. Stand East, Golden Pacific, The Brook, and Connection. Then we have Dunkin' Donuts and Domino's and Little Sandwich Shops. So my question is, first of all, to raise 3/4 of a percent in taxes, somebody's got to do the accounting, the bookkeeping, tracking the funds. So we're probably going to be losing money in that deal by the time it's all done. But when we say restaurants, are we talking about, let's call it those four establishments? Are we talking, when I go into Dunkin' Donuts and get a cup of coffee and a bagel, am I paying on that tax? And so I just think it's a, we're not a town, we're not like Braintree or other towns that have a lot of restaurants and people coming to town to eat. Myself, my wife, we've been here for, going on 35 years, and I can count on my hands the number of times we've really eaten in this town. It's not a dining town, and that's just my comment.
Thank you, Mrs. Simpson. Do we have another hand here? Yes, go ahead, you're next.
Tom Haskins, Precinct 4. The same question plus a comment. Is this required by state law or is it optional?
Do you, do you want to go ahead? You had your question and then go ahead with your comment and take a seat.
My comment is, it's my impression that a lot of people who go through this town don't stop for businesses, and if our, if our, if our cost of dining might be 7.5 cents, 7.34 cents cheaper per $10, that's a little bit of incentive for them to stop here and eat, whereas if we pass this, they'll have less incentive.
Thank you. The first part of that was a question. Does somebody like to try to answer that one?
Try to answer the couple of questions we just had. So on the question of what, what, who would be subject to this, any, any person that serves prepared food that you currently, when you dine at them, you're paying a 6.25% state restaurant, state restaurant meals tax. Okay, so this just adds the 0.75% that is our portion for Holbrook. The state does all of the accounting for, so we would get a list provided by the state of all establishments in town that already pay that state meals tax so that we can verify that all of them are actually on that list. And because this includes caterers and people that do, again, might not be a traditional restaurant, per se, but serve prepared meals. So they are all subject to that. The state does all the accounting, so once the tax goes into place, as part, they would be, the restaurant would collect 7% instead of 6.25%, they would remit that to the state. The state then gives us our money. So there's no accounting, there's no overhead on our part. We collect the money on a quarterly basis from the state. In terms of being optional, yes, it's optional. And that's why, I believe it was 2010 that the state allowed this option to go into place for local municipalities to actually offset their property taxes. And of course, the early adopters were the big towns that had big highways and big restaurants and big malls and Boston and, actually Braintree took a couple of years to put in place, think Abington was before them. But now, even Avon next to us has it, and like I say, if you look at the, if you look at the map, all of the towns have it except, in Norfolk County, except for Dover. Thank you. The, the very nice town of Dover, which I think doesn't have many tax issues or, or revenue problems. This, according to the state figures, would take in approximately $70,000 in revenue. So I know people say, well, who, who goes to our restaurants, who gets food from us? If you talk to our restaurants, they deliver outside of our community on a regular basis, as well as people travel through our community and they stop at our Dunkin' Donuts and they stop at our restaurants and they use our services. So I think that this, yes, there would be residents of Holbrook that would pay a portion of this tax, but this allows others to also pay it to offset it. So that's, I think I've answered just about every question that came up.
Okay, so there was additional debate, one, two. Are you actually, how you hand up first a minute ago, I think? Are you, Ms., do you have your hand up or are you pointing at the ceiling? I'm going to make you talk. Okay.
Tim Briggs, Precinct 2, again. So my other question is if, if this is now a, a town tax that needs to be paid, do we have to pay someone more money to collect it? Are there more hours? Do we have to have more personnel? And what is it actually going to cost us? Did I miss that?
The state handles all of it, and we just got the remit.
That's okay. It's fine. It's, it's getting late, I understand. You have the gentleman here and Mr. Sigga?
Benjamin Wells, Precinct 4. I was just curious, we take in the taxes and they send it to us, what fund does it go into?
Thank you, Mr. Wells. So somebody want to try to answer that?
Into the general fund. And so in the first year, this has not been allocated within the budget, so the first year it would go to excess capacity when we pass the recap in the fall. So it would, in the first year, lower the taxes by 60 or 50 to $60,000 in FY '18. And then in future years, it's just general fund revenue, so then it has to be allocated within the budget process.
Further debater questions? One more. Jimmy and Crew, can you keep it down up front there? So appreciate that, thank you.
Mike Sigga, Precinct 2. This law was enacted by the state in 2009 in a direct response to the financial crisis of 2008. So we're here 10 or so years later, and that bodes a couple of questions. Why, if we didn't need it then, why do we need it now? And also, I think if, if we implement this tax, we can expect it to stick around. Luckily, the, the rate of 0.75% hasn't changed over the last decade, but then again, we haven't had a financial crisis in the last decade. So once we do, I can, I think we can expect that dial to move a little bit. But to answer the folks' question about, is there going to be a reduction in taxes? Are we going to get more services? Is it going to reduce the debt? Is it going to put a dent in our outstanding unfunded liabilities? I think the answer is pretty clear. It will not. It's essentially a solution that offers no change. Thank you.
Just one quick comment.
Hold on a second, there's a procedural, there's a, there's actually a procedural motion on the floor here. And the procedural motion is to move the question. He's kind of already speaking, it was pretty close, we don't have a photo finish. So would you mind holding off on that? Okay, so please have your seat.
I raised my hand before you moved it.
So the rule of moving the question is it cannot interrupt the speaker, and you weren't speaking at the time, although you had been placed in order. So he, so he is correct on the motion. The motion is not debatable, it does require a 2/3s majority to move the question forward. So, you know, this is your chance here to, to not move it forward if you want to continue debate. All those in favor, now this isn't in favor of the article, this is just in favor of moving a vote to, to a vote on the article. All those in favor of moving the question forward and, and bringing it to a vote, raise your hands. All those opposed? Could, yeah, we're trying to, I'm trying to get a count. All right, the chair is in doubt here, let's get a count here, all those in favor, all those opposed? All those in favor, please rise. Yeah, it does look like more now, it didn't when you were sitting, but let's get it right. Please be seated. All those opposed? Opposed to terminating debate? Thank you. I think we're counted. Okay, the tally is there 105 in favor of terminating debate. There are 32 opposed to terminating debate. The motion to terminate debate does carry. We'll now move to vote on the main question. And the main question before the body right now is Article 25, to see if the town will accept provisions of, or to accept the provisions of the Massachusetts General Laws regarding the local meals tax. The vote requires a simple majority. All those in favor of Article 25? All those opposed? Let's count it again. All those in favor, please stand. We've counted. All those in favor, please be seated. All those opposed, please rise. Thank you. The vote's been taken. Please be seated. Okay, on Article 25, there being 58 in favor and 73 opposed. Article 25 does not carry. Mr. Costa, you're going to read Article 26.
Yes. I move that the town accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Law Chapter 64G, Section 3A, as amended, which shall authorize the town to impose a local excise tax upon the transfer of occupancy of any room or rooms in a bed and breakfast establishment, hotel, lodging house, or motel located within the town by any operator and further to establish a tax rate of 6% of the total amount of rent for such, for each such occupancy.
Motion has been made and seconded. Mr. Costa, FinCom report first.
Finance Committee recommends acceptance five to one.
So further discussion on Article 26?
So similar to the prior restaurant one, this is a local option that similarly went into effect in 2009. Currently, we have no hotels under the current definition, so this would not increase any revenue. However, at the state level, there is current discussion, a couple of different tracks, about online rentals of rooms. Currently, this only applies to rentals of establishments that have four rooms or more. The discussion at the state level is to tax people and entities and businesses that are renting their homes, one-room, two-room, three-rooms. And so this would just put us on a level that if and when that state law changes, we can collect the revenue from those businesses that are operating within our community. That's the point on this one.
Further discussion on Article 26?
Matt Lico, Precinct 4. I don't know if you clarified that for me. Does this cover Airbnb or not?
That's the exact intent of this, is covering Airbnb, HomeAway, all those establishments. And you'd be surprised, if you go online, how many are actually, actually, it's not a huge amount, but that are actually, these do happen in our community, that people are renting rooms and renting their houses out on a limited basis.
Bill Forty, Precinct 3. Is this type of business activity allowed in a residential zone in the town of Holbrook?
Thank you, Mr. Forty.
That'd be his only question. I don't know.
Is there, Dan, you want to try to? And just calling upon the building commissioner to try to get a rough idea.
Usually not, but there are some state laws that allow up to three unrelated people to live in a single-family home. I don't know how you're going to clarify it from that point.
Thank you, Mr. Moriarty.
So this doesn't change the fact that if they do or do not, this just says that if they are doing it, we'll get our cut of them operating this business within town. That part about, are they allowed to or not, is a different jurisdictional question than this motion.
My concern here is, to whom does this apply? Is it for every homeowner in the, in the, in the town that rents out a room? Or is it, is there a certain criteria or specific criteria on that that needs to be satisfied in order to trigger this?
So currently, as the statute reads, currently, as the statute reads that we're accepting, is for businesses, bed and breakfast, that rent out four rooms or more. So there's, they're already, again, subject to the state tax system that they're paying their rooms and room tax to the state. And the state would collect this, and so on and so forth. We have no establishments currently in town that fit that criteria. There is discussion at the state level, again, to modify this chapter to allow for short-term rentals, things like Airbnb. This is not meant for somebody that rents out a room for an entire year to somebody. This is for short-term rentals specifically geared towards people that rent them out through the internet websites. That's what it's, that's what it's geared to. I think it's 90 days or less, technically, within the recent law that I was looking at, or the proposal that was out there. 90 days or less, and it would be if you rent out one room, two rooms, or your entire home. On a short-term basis, you'd be subject to that state tax, and on top of that, the local tax.
Further discussions?
This strikes me as just a little extra burden on the very small businesses in the town.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article number 26, Mr. Sigga?
Yes, one quick thing. Mike Sigga, Precinct 2. It's a solution to a problem the town doesn't have. And that's essentially it. Thank you.
So motion on the floor to move the question. The motion, the motion to move the question is second. Requires a two-thirds majority. It's not debatable. All those in favor of moving the question? All those opposed? This carries unanimously. The question is moved. We move to the question at hand on Article 26, to see if the town will accept the Massachusetts General Law Chapter 64G 3A, as the motion has been made and printed in the warrant. All those in favor of Article 26? All those opposed to Article 26? That motion does not carry by count. Okay, as we move to Article 27, I do want to, I know this is quite a contentious one. I want to remind folks that we will be, keep remain to the topics within the article. Do not engage in personalities, not saying persons' names, or saying hey you or hey you. You'll be ruled out of order. I want you to make sure that the speakers, you speak at the discretion of the moderator. So keep in mind, if I'm trying to stop you, hold you up for some procedural reason. We do have this motion that wasn't printed in the warrant. The motion's been provided to the moderator. What we'll do is we'll move into the article itself and sort of, just as a rough show of hands, how many people want to speak on this one? Okay, that's fair. Let's go ahead. Ms. Greeley, I believe you are a representative petitioners. You'd like to make the principal motion?
Yes, do I make it from this microphone?
Yeah, that's perfectly fine.
Okay, thank you. Patricia Greeley, Precinct 2. I move that the town of Holbrook transfer a certain parcel of land to the town of Holbrook, Holbrook Town Forest, approximately 32 plus or minus acres, as shown on a plan of land on file at the office of the town clerk and identified as shown on the Holbrook Accessors Maps as parcel 05002.
Motion has been moved and seconded. So of course, the first thing was, we've done in the other articles, we'll get the official FinCom recommendation on the article from Mr. Costa. And then, you know, if you want to come back and talk about it later, then we'll do that.
Finance Committee does not.
I'm sorry?
The article doesn't have to be read. It's a motion. Sorry.
Okay, so that's my, you're welcome. So the article in the warrant, the article in the warrant is, warns the folks in town, meeting in town, that the town is going to take some sort of action related to that topic in that article. The motion, which Ms. Greeley just read, actually is what's being proposed. I think you're concerned about the difference that there was money in one and not in the other. That's within the, that's within the bounds of the article to remove the request for funds. Okay.
The Finance Committee does not recommend the motion made six, not recommending zero against.
Thank you, Mr. Costa. You're the petitioner. Would you do wish to speak?
Yes, first, can I just speak to the money coming off part quickly? The reason is that we didn't have time to take it off before the warrant was printed, and that we knew that the town already had the funds, so there was no sense funding the article. I have a map.
Okay, so if there's a speaking, the next speaker, first of all, you can't have that in front of the moderator.
Okay.
Okay?
Where would, can I put that somewhere so that we?
That's probably fine. Okay, there. Are you going to continue speaking on the article?
Yes, please.
Okay, so this is just a helper. Before you start, we'll have the gentleman take a seat.
I'd point from here, though.
If you'd like to walk up, there's a handheld mic. I don't know whether you're going to get feedback up here or not.
Okay, all right. Yeah. Thanks, Ed. Awesome. Thank you. After so many years of working to protect this precious land, it's hard to know where to begin. Environmentally, the 32 is a complicated piece of property, and that's what makes it so very special. It's the perfect storm of untouched nature with many very special features. It feels much more remote than it is. And this is largely because of its unique features and environmental qualities. Half of the parcel is part of the Cranberry Brook area of critical environmental concern. 30 years ago, a group of concerned citizens and, I can try. All right, is this okay? 30 years ago, a group of concerned citizens and community leaders. Where do I face?
Make sure I can get your attention if I need to, that's all.
Came together to protect the area around Cranberry Pond. And in 1983, the designation was made by the Massachusetts Secretary of Environmental Affairs, James Holt. Cranberry Brook watershed makes up 12% of the supply to the Ricciardi Reservoir, but is of such pure high quality that its value is even greater, as it helps dilute the less pure water from the rest of the watershed, where there are more pollutants and runoffs from development. The designation sought to focus attention on the value and sensitivity of the area as future development took place, and that's a direct quote from the designation. The designation document states that a loss of wetlands, which serve to collect, store, and filter surface water from pollutants from inappropriate use of uplands, could jeopardize this very vital water supply. This is one of the reasons why we should save the 32. The easterly side of the parcel drains to the great Weymouth Reservoir. The top third of it, follow this jazz here, is classified as Zone A, the most restrictive of all surface water protection zones, as runoff flows directly into the drinking water. About 60% is classified as both a priority habitat and rare habitat. These are Department of Fish and Wildlife designations under the Natural Heritage Program, indicating habitats and threats and, indicating habitats of threatened and endangered native plant and animal species. A subset of these are estimated habitats, which specifically protect rare wild, wetland wildlife species which fall under the Wetlands Protection Act. The entire parcel is a contiguous tract of wilderness, which continues to be fragmented, leaving less and less land for its inhabitants, the many species of plants and animals that flourish here. Our Commonwealth calls it BiOMAP 2 core habitat, which for us makes it feel remote, even though it's in a well-populated area. And this is largely because this is part of a tract of untouched land and has a buffer from development. The 32 acres are untamed wilderness. Save for the trails, it barely shows traces of man's footprint. For it's the very special heart of our forest, let's not waste that gift. The best way to protect this land is not to sell it. We are going to lose, we aren't going to lose anything, because we haven't been collecting taxes on it for many years. Our town currently has no open space plan and no conservation agent. Therefore, protecting our natural resources is our responsibility as town meeting members. If we don't protect them, no one else will. Responsible smart development means allowing projects that make sense for the town, while limiting the impact on our resources. The proposed 54-acre project will still happen without selling this property. He can still get the benefit on the property he already owns. He just can't make it any bigger. This project will mean many changes along that corridor. Please be sure we have some limits on those changes. That will be the real win-win. Open land in the town adds property value, and more importantly, makes for a better town. Other towns on the South Shore have the Community Preservation Act, or the CPA, so they can buy and keep open land. We're essentially getting this land handed to us. We don't have to buy it. Please don't give up this opportunity to keep the land and let it benefit the people of Holbrook forever. And please vote yes on this motion.
Is there somebody who is, thank you, Ms. Greeley. You can give the microphone to the gentleman at the back. Would admonish the folks in the audience to have no displays of emotion or outburst applause, booing or cheering, please, that would be out of order. Is there somebody, in all fairness, is there somebody who wishes to speak against the article? Mr. Costa?
This article, according to town council and tax saddle attorneys, actually does not protect this land. It actually has, it does nothing. Town meeting is not authorized to move this land from tax saddle possession into property of Holbrook or anything like that. So unfortunately, a vote in favor of this or against this changes nothing tomorrow. I would recommend that we entertain an alternative motion that would actually start the process of putting the land into conservation, 26 acres of that 32 acres into conservation land. The process for putting land into conservation is, town meeting has to take a two-thirds vote in favor of taking it. Then you have to do certain layouts and forms and plans, as well as other applications, send that to the state, who actually has to approve that you're taking this land into conservation for permanent reasons, and then it would be deeded. So by taking a vote tonight, we would actually start that process and actually prevent 26 of the 32 acres from actually being developed. So I would present an alternative motion. I would move, I would move to strike the existing motion, and in its place, move the town authorized Conservation Restriction CR on a portion of a certain parcel of land, approximately 32 plus or minus acres, as shown on a plan of land on file at the office of the town clerk and identified as shown on the Holbrook Accessors Maps as parcel 05002. Land currently held as tax possession of the town of Holbrook, provided that a portion of the land, up to 6.1 acres of the 32 plus or minus acres, may be excluded from the CR. The intent of the CR is to preserve 26-plus acres of the 32-plus or minus acre property for the outdoor recreation, buy, and the education of the general public to protect natural habitats of fish, wildlife, plants, and ecosystems, and preserve forest land. The CR shall not allow alterations to the property in perpetuity. The wording and submission of the CR shall be prepared following town meeting by the Board of Selectmen with participation by the Conservation Commission and Forest Committee. The CR shall be registered and legally enforced prior to any construction on said parcel.
I'm sorry, I'm not clear over your motion. Is that a motion to amend? Let's get Mr. Costa back up here. Mr. Costa, can you explain your motion? You, you made a motion, is this a motion to amend the main article?
Yes, striking the, the main article and in its place inserting the entire thing.
It was seconded?
Yeah.
Who seconded it? Is there a printed copy of this for the record?
Several printed copies.
Where is it?
Mr. Town Council has it currently.
You have a change?
Yes, so the last two sentences shall be stricken.
Alright, so you're going to withdraw your original motion to amend then?
Sure.
Okay. Withdrawn without objection? Do you object to withdraw the motion? Okay, let's get the motion in play first, okay?
Do you want to redo the motion?
Is the body sufficiently apprised of what the motion is, and is it okay if he just reads the last two sentences, or would you like to reread the entire motion?
Move the Town Authorized Conservation Restriction on a portion of a certain parcel of land, approximately 32 plus or minus acres, as shown on a plan of land on the file of the office of the town clerk and identified as shown in the Holbrook accessors map, parcel 05002. Land currently held as tax possession of the town of Holbrook, provided that a portion of the land, up to 6.1 acres of the 32 plus or minus acres, may be excluded from the CR. The intent of the CR is to preserve 26-plus acres of the 32 plus or minus acre property for the outdoor recreation buy and the education of the general public to protect natural habitats of fish, wildlife, plants, and ecosystems, preserve forest lands. The CR shall, shall not allow alterations to the property in perpetuity.
Motion is amended and seconded. Can I get a, for the, just to be procedurally correct, the motion that Mr. Costa made to withdraw requires a majority vote. I'm sorry, I'm a little behind in my reading. All is in favor of allowing that withdrawal? All is opposed to allowing the withdrawal? Motion carries by majority, so the motion is withdrawn, and the new motion is in place, moved and seconded. Mr. Costa, go ahead and give us a discussion on your motion. FinCom recommendation and not your personal?
FinCom recommends acceptance 6-0.
Moderator? Mr. Costa?
So, as I mentioned, the, the main art, art, the main motion actually did nothing at the end of the day. And the goal here, by all of the, the, the people involved in the situation from the Board of Selectmen on down, on their, on the other side has been to preserve at least 26 acres of that property. So what this is doing is preserving, starting the process of preserving 26 acres of that property. The, because it was taken as tax title, it will eventually have to go out for auction. But because if we put a conservation restriction on the land by starting this process now, and it is a, it is a process that has to go through, once it gets approved, then it gets auctioned, the conservation restriction remains intact in perpetuity. The only way to undo that conservation restriction is Conservation Commission would have to vote to approve, Town Meeting by two-thirds would have to vote to remove the conservation restriction, and it would have to go to the State Department of Conservation to allow it to come out of conservation and go back into unconserved land. So I think that this does ultimately, hopefully, what the goal of, of the people that, of, of selling it, but also protecting a significant portion of it. I hope it's a, something in the middle of that.
Thank you, Mr. Costa. Mr. Callanan, you had your hand up. Wait for the microphone.
Paul Callanan, Precinct 2. I'm very confused here. We've yet to hear from, number one, Mr. Moderator, the town attorney, and number two, the developer of the property. If in fact we adopt Mr., the subpetitioner's motion, will this affect his development at all? I mean, I understand that the petitioner wants 32 acres saved, the subpetitioner wants 26 acres, but yet we've, we've heard, haven't heard from Mr. DeLuca or the developer. Can we have those folks speak in order, please?
I, I, well, you, you have no standing to ask somebody to speak. If they want to, they can raise their hands and they can speak.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Unitz?
In a previous article, we changed 1984 to 1986. I can understand that. This is totally changing an article on the floor tonight. It's not a small change. I think this entire article should be, if no action or voted down, or come back at another meeting, if this is what you're proposing. This is a lot for people to take on tonight with this total change. This is something that should go to Conservation, the Conservation Commission, who should prepare a report for Town Meeting. The, the Forest Committee should prepare a report based on your proposal, but none of that can be done right here on the floor tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Unitz. Again, the, the debate on the floor is regarding the motion to amend. Once we dispose of the motion, then we'll move back to the main article, whether it is amended or not.
So just a couple of answers there. The, the understanding of everybody involved has been that the developer ultimately is supposed to, or the plan would be, that 26 acres will be conserved, whether it is done through Town Meeting or at a later date through Town Meeting, after the property is sold and there's conditions upon the auction that 26, roughly 26 acres would be designated as conservation land. The developer is only looking to develop, I believe, and go, I don't want to go to the truth of the path, 6 acres of that 32 acres, which is why the 26 acres would be protected. 6 acres would be eligible for development at some point in time. There was something else that somebody, oh, Mike just had. So in terms of the germaneness of this to the main article, the, the, the article that was printed in the Town Meeting warrant was about this specific piece of property and about transferring it to the town as, as conservation land was, was the, the intent of the article. So by, by saying 26 of the 32 acres is still germane to the article at hand.
So as far as the germaneness of the motion, you're number two, Ms. Greeley. You had the floor next. When we go to a vote, I, I've just saw this now, so I'll confer with Town Council and make sure it's within the four corners of the article. You had your hand up next, or do you want to?
Katie Goldrick, Precinct 2. The original motion that Patricia just made had nothing to do with conservation land. We did not mention that this land would become conservation land, and now he has assumed that that's how we were going to address it, and that's in fact not the plan and not what we said.
So I do want to caution you to stay, to stay within the scope of the actual amendment.
Sure. So the amendment refers to the land as conservation. That is not the intent.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Greeley, you're next.
Tell me if I'm out of order. Half of the forest is just called public domain, which is what the intent of the article is. I, I think that the amendment is, Mr. Costa's comment was that, I'm not supposed to cross-talk.
That's correct.
Alright.
That's good, I don't want to have to use a gavel tonight.
Thank you, on me. The comment was that it's, it's not, it's not doing anything. It is doing something. It's bringing it in as town forest, just like half of the land is town forest already, just town forest. Half of it is conservation town forest. And selling 6 acres off, which is the effect of the amendment, isn't going to be bringing in the big bucks that, that everyone's thinking we're going to get if we sell the whole parcel, because the, the plan, the developer that they've been talking to, needs to get the open space so that he can get the density to get the, the tax money that the, the town's waiting for. So carving it up like that isn't going to do anything except sell off part of the forest.
Thank you, Ms. Greeley.
And William Forty, I don't speak on behalf of the Holbrook Conservation Commission, but I am a member of the board and the vice chair. I just would question, I'm not for or against any motion, but I would question the procedural way in which the land is acquired. I believe that under the town bylaw, the only way to transfer open space is through an approval of the Conservation Commission, and I would ask Town Council to review that and, you know, just want to make that comment.
Thank you, Mr. Forty. Town Council wanted to speak? Okay, so there are several questions for Council. Two are procedural that I'll take off the mic. They're regarding the, uh, uh, there's one I'll have for you regarding the quantum of vote to approve the motion, and the other one would be regarding the scope of the motion, is this within the four corners of the yard?
Yeah, it's a citizen petition.
No, this, we're talking about the motion.
Understood. The, the motion being made, a motion to amend, is to a citizen petition.
Yeah, can we have some audio here? Let's start this again.
Sorry, Mr. Moderator.
This is Mr. David DeLuca, this is the Town Council.
Thank you, Town Council. I, I have spent some considerable time and study of this particular article, and it's a petition brought forward by a citizen, and by its very nature, it's, it's a bit broader than would typically be the case.
Dave, let's keep the, keep within the scope of the motion, which is what's on debate right now.
I understand that. The motion, the motion, it brought...
Thank, thank you for your point. I think Dave knows.
Yeah, I, I am, I understand. The, the amendment that's being proposed is...
We have some audio problems here.
The amendment that's being proposed is in connection with a citizen petition. There's a bit more flexibility by way of the amendment that's being brought in a citizen petition. Inherent in a citizen petition is the need to be a bit more flexible. That motion that is provided is within the scope of the original petition.
Okay, thank you. And the other question was from Mr. Forty regarding whether the only way, I, I think your question was, is the method of acquiring land through conservation the only method? Is that correct, or why don't you restate that real quickly, make sure I have that right?
Yes, again, Mr. Moderator, again, for the record, William Forty, I believe that the transfer of land, of open space to the town is through the conservation, a vote through the Conservation Commission under the town bylaw, I believe.
Thank you. I'm not sure if you want to try to tackle that, Council?
There's, this will be off the subject of the amendment. This will be off the subject of the amendment itself.
Anybody want to jump?
Again, Mr. Moderator, clarification. So the, the first motion that was on the floor, I know it's off topic.
That's the main motion, right?
Yes, okay. On, on the main motion, I don't believe that a parcel of land could be transferred to the Town Forest Committee. It has to go through the Conservation Commission. My whole point.
Okay. I'm not sure Attorney DeLuca, how you'd like to respond. You're not required to respond either.
I, I do agree with the speaker on that respect. There's a number of different ways. The most prominent way is through the Conservation Commission for the town to acquire property in that manner. Rather than speak to the main motion, which I, I do have several comments on, if we were to get back to that.
Then we will.
As to the, the amendment, I did work with the Finance Committee Chairman on that amendment, as it was within the scope of the petition, and it sought to achieve what I thought was the, the intent of not only the petition, but the town government in being able to preserve the property, but at the same time be able to act on what is a, a tax title property, which is really more of a receipt owed to the town. It's a receivable. It's, it's not a, an item of, of property that can be preserved just yet. So based on that, I thought that the, the amendment being offered was a reasonable compromise insofar as the town being able to capitalize on what is a receipt owed to the town, and at the same time achieve preservation of a substantial portion of the property.
Thank you, Mr. DeLuca. Further discussion on the amendment?
Chuck Greeley, Precinct 2. I'd like somebody, I'd like somebody to try to explain to me the tax title laws in relation to this, why it has to be auctioned. That's the part that I don't understand.
Uh, let's see. Let me just read the scope of the motion here. The motion on the floor right now doesn't refer to tax title or tax title auction in any way. So, you know, if you, you care to rephrase that maybe?
In his explanation of why he made the motion, he was referring to the fact that the land has to be auctioned off, and I don't understand that. So I want to understand that so I can make a good vote on the motion.
Okay. Sure, let's make it brief. The other thing is, the hour is getting late, so we'd ask the speakers to avoid repetition and to, to use brevity where possible, and try to get everybody who wants to talk.
Mr. Moderator, this is property that came to the town through a tax delinquency. The taxes were not paid. There was a foreclosure that occurred. It is now considered to be a tax in possession. And again, that is a receivable, it's money owed to the town, the amount of which I'm not entirely sure. Mr. DiGiulamo would certainly know that. The, any tax recovery is governed by chapter 60, and in chapter 60, there is an appointment of a custodian. In this case, it's our town treasurer, and that town treasurer is obligated to dispose of the property by auction. That's the, the, the law of tax title.
Ms., you're next. Can you wait for the microphone or grab this one up here?
Karen Santorelli, Precinct 4. I was just curious if this was set to be auctioned off at this time anyhow, or is it being auctioned off because someone, the developer approached Town Hall interested in buying the land? Because to me, that would seem like maybe it's not quite an arms-length deal. It just, the timing of it seems off.
Thank you, Ms. Santorelli. Mr. DiGiulamo, would you like the floor?
We do have an interested party. It just happens to be the land, at this point, the land may be landlocked, and he may be the only interested, but it's open, as by law, for public auction. So anybody can come and bid on his property.
Ms., hold on a minute. Let's, no, no, we're not going to do cross-examination, okay? When you're done speaking, let me know. You're all set? Thank you, take your seat. Oh, we got a phone ringing. Ah, okay. I have Katie, you're next in line, and then the, the, Ms. Santorelli.
Katie Goldrick, Precinct 2. Are we allowed to have anyone that's in the audience, not a participant here, speak on behalf of their interest in the past?
I'm not quite sure I understand your question.
What the prior speaker asked was about timing, and someone here in this room can speak on behalf of an interest in the past and being denied.
I'm still not quite clear if...
So can someone other than a town member speak?
Okay, so the rules for speaking at Town Meeting is if you want to speak at Town Meeting and you're either a Town Meeting member or you're a registered voter in the town, you can raise your hands, get the attention of the moderator, and you're allowed to speak at Town Meeting. Is that your question? Okay, thank you. Ms. Santorelli? Yeah, you, you had your hand up and then you sat down. Wait for your microphone.
I was just going to repeat my question.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know if I need to. He's not here now, so.
Alright, so...
It was the original question, which he did not address.
Okay, thank you. I had, you're all set? Ms. Greeley, anybody who's not spoken before? Again, we're in the article here. And again, you know, the hour is getting late. We want to move it along and get back to the main article. I want to give everybody who wants to speak a chance to speak tonight.
My, my name is Edward O'Keefe, Precinct 2. For one, the, the 32-acre parcel what's in there, the trails, okay, which could be, you know, brought, you know, supposedly has gone to a 26 on, on the floor here now. The boundary trail, okay, has, has been, has been noted, okay, in 1967 in the annual report, as well as the Garden of the Guards was first noted in the, by the Boy Scouts in 1958. That's also in that parcel. There's a lot of history here, and also, this, this map is officially on our town government site as being forest trails for over 60 years.
Okay, so let's make sure we stay within the actual amendment, okay?
Okay, yep. But I just wanted, I just wanted to really note that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Sir, I have you as number two.
Sue Krim, Precinct 1. I have a question. Does this land have to be auctioned by law? There was a mention of chapter 60 under MGL. Do we have to auction it? Why does that, is that something we have to do, and what the pressing need to do it now? And what the pressing need to do it now? Those trails have been there for longer than I've been alive. So, I don't understand why it either has to be the 26 amended, or we can't just, the town owns the land. I don't understand why we would have to have an amended petition, and why the first petition wouldn't be valid legally. Could somebody address that, please?
Thank you, Ms. Krim. Does Town Council want to take that on?
Mr. Moderator, my response to that is that, again, it's a parcel of property that represents a receivable, money that's owed to the town. The judgment on whether or not a property that is recovered in tax title is to be sold is frankly, an economic question. We also own, we also own property that has no value. This property happens to have significant value, and in that sense, it's responsible, and the collector is responsible for acting on that for everyone's benefit in order to make sure that the town is collecting all that it is owed, not just in back taxes, but the tax revenue going forward.
Thank you, Mr. DeLuca. I have this gentleman over here in the audience. Why don't you come on in? And watch out for that speaker cable when you come by there. It's kind of draped across the floor. And when you get up to a microphone here, let us know your name and what street you're from.
Good evening. Adam Fabian, 45, Wright Ave. in Holbrook. And although I'm on the Town Forest Committee, I'm not speaking for that, because this isn't officially the Holbrook Town Forest.
Okay, again, reminder, we're discussing the amendment to the article, and we'll move back to the article.
Sure, sure, sure. I will say that in the amendment, they're talking about conserving 26 acres or whatever. The town's outdated open space plan that we do have. Some of the goals of that, to protect Holbrook's natural resources, objective number one, to provide protection for the wetlands and water resources through vigorous enforcement of the Mass Wetlands Protection Act. Objective two, to protect Holbrook's water supply through protection of the aquifer and recharge areas. Objective three, acquire parcels of land with significant natural resources and wildlife habitat values. And there's, there's a whole lot more. But, let's see. Chapter 45, Section 19 of MGL, Acquisition and Property. Section 19, a town by two-thirds vote in annual town meeting, which I'm pretty sure this is. City of town by two-thirds vote may determine to take or purchase land within its limits, which shall be public domain. Doesn't mention anything about conservation land. With any appropriate money or accepted gifts of money or land, therefore, public domain shall be devoted to the culture of forest trees and the preservation of the water supply of such city or town. This is part of our watershed. This is part of Wamis watershed. On title, therefore, shall be vested in the town which it lies, except for cities and towns owning the land and territorial limits, so. Thank you.
Thank you very much for speaking. I had two hands down the frontier, sir. Was there another one next in order? Or two in order? You're three. Again, the motion on the floor is, this is on the amendment, the alternative offered by Mr. Costa, which I'll read again before we vote on it.
Quick question. Are there any alternative methodologies that we could use so that the town could take this property, other than through tax title? Through prescription or something like that, so that it avoids the issues that are associated with taking the property through tax title? Because we may have other alternatives to taking the property, don't we?
Okay, thank you. Does Town Council would like to try to? Town Council would be more qualified to answer that question.
It's unalterable. The property is taken for tax title. It is now a tax in possession. It's done.
Thank you. I had you first, and then two back there.
Angela Krim, Precinct One. So, I'm a little confused on the language here, because we're being told that we have to auction this, and yet we're also being told that we're not legally required to auction it. So, why the rush? Why do we have to if we're not legally required to?
And I have someone over here, had their hand up next. Mr. Greeley? I'm sorry. You have your hand up now? Okay. I think I have one ahead of you down here. Was there a second hand up in front? Okay, go ahead, Mr. Greeley.
Yeah, and this is a continuation of the same thing. I'm sorry. I want to understand it, so that I can vote on this amendment. If the land is not auctioned off by the treasurer-collector, would he be breaking a law?
So, this is a sort of a Town Council question, too. Dave, you're getting the exercise in tonight. Could you come up and try to answer the question? And I believe the question simply is...
I think it's, it's an economic question. It's a political question.
Hold on a minute. Point of order, you can't hear him? Well, that's a whole different story there. Can everybody hear the speaker? Okay. Let's get a little more volume on that has a mic. It's not the mic, okay?
The question, all right, the question is whether or not it would be illegal not to sell it? As I said earlier, it's an economic question. That is, we have several properties that are held in tax title. Some of them have zero value. This property does not. The collector, the treasurer-collector, has it within his duties and responsibilities to collect all of the tax that's owed to the town of Holbrook. And in a case where there is property that has economic value, he's duty-bound to do that.
Okay, again, we're still on the motion to amend. I had Mr. Costa in queue. And I had one hand down here. Ms. Goldrick, you were also. And there's quite a few people that want to speak on the motion to amend here. Make sure your comments are directed at the motion to amend that Mr. Costa offered. That's what's under debate here, not the main motion. I have a speaker on the floor, is Mr. Costa, right now. That's correct. Under the powers of the moderator to regulate the proceedings, I'm not going to rule on your motion at this time. We have a few more speakers awaiting.
So, just to clarify a couple of points, I'll try to be quick. The intent of this is not to subdivide the 32 acres. This would add, start the process of adding conservation restrictions onto 26 of those 32 acres. The tax title custodian would then still auction off the 32 acres, as we've understood tonight. Those 32 acres would then go to the next owner. That next owner does not remove that conservation restriction unless, as I stated earlier, it goes through that three-level process of Conservation Commission, town meeting, and the state approving that, removing that. So, that conservation restriction is permanent to any future owner, whether it's the next owner or an owner 50 years from now, unless Conservation Commission, us, and the state approve to remove that conservation restriction, that's in place. Thank you.
I had, where is your point of order? Yes, but the moderator has the ability to regulate the procedures, the proceedings, and to decide which motions are available on the floor or not. I understand that. Let's get a few more in, and I think, once we get a few more folks we haven't heard from yet, then we'll entertain that motion. Let's get a couple of people. There's people want to, you know, there's, folks, we are getting into some repeated things about this motion. To his point, is there new information or new information on this motion to amend that we want to hear? How many speakers want to provide new information? Okay, let's, you know, I'm loathe to allow, to continue to hold off his motion much longer than that. I've heard from Ms. Goldrick already. Go ahead. Did you have your hand up? Go ahead, Terry. Try to keep it brief.
Terry McHugh, Precinct One. I think maybe we need to go back to what Mike Unit said. There seem like there's a lot of different conversations going on. There are other suggestions. Maybe there's an alternative that can make everybody happy, or at least semi-happy, but I think there's a lot of stuff that still needs to be discussed, and I think we need to go back to Mike's suggestion.
Thank you, and thank you for your brevity. You could move to table the motion, but that would screw up the main motion, too. Let's continue the discussion. Let's get this done tonight, okay? Let's, okay, there's a, he, the gentleman has asked a question of order, and he asked if the question, to table the motion, was in order. And tabling the motion, you know, would apply to the amendment and the main motion at the point. What I've asked him to do is, let's see if we can flesh this out and get this done tonight, rather than tabling and moving along. You know, certainly if it comes to that, and the motion is put on the floor, then we would entertain that motion and vote on it. So, let's keep it brief. Let's finish off with this amendment here. Let's move to the main article. Let's get this done tonight. I know the hour is late, and some of this is repetitions, but let's get this done. Bill? What's your point of order? No, no, he, no, there was a... No, Bill, Bill, take your seat, please. The gentleman rose to a point of information not to make a motion. He asked the question if it was possible to lay it on the table, and I answered that question. He did not make the motion to lay it on the table. There's a speaker on the floor. I'm sorry, the motion cannot interrupt the current speaker. When he's done, you're entitled to make that motion. Sir?
Hi, Tim Stinson, Precinct Two, and currently the chairman of the Conservation Commission. Again, I'm not speaking for the commission. There's been no vote on our part. But Mr. Cross's proposal is what I'd call the perfect solution to a problem. There's a group that wants to preserve this area. I know you see the publicity they put out, they talk about vernal pools and wildlife and what have you. The developer is also looking at developing approximately six acres and not getting into the vernal pool areas. The commission, the Conservation Commission, would also be overseeing the development of this property, on those six acres. So, if there's any wetland issues or what have you, we would be looking out for that, protecting those areas. I also understand the developer's also looking at providing access for the public. Right now, people in this town cannot get into the town forest. You have no place to park.
Let's keep the comments to the actual...
Okay. So, anyway, getting back to the amendment, the calling 26 acres as conservation land and protecting it in the sale of the property is a common sense approach. Able to auction off the property, get the money for the town, and protect 26 acres and allow access for the public. So, I think it's a win-win situation all around. And I would hope the people in the room would take that into consideration, as opposed to turn this into a, you know...
Thank you.
Emotional moment.
I have, I have speakers that haven't had the opportunity to have the floor yet, in all fairness. No, you asked for point of information. Okay, you make a motion to lay on the table. Motion has been made and seconded to lay on the table. This would effectively kill the amendment and the article for this evening. It is not a debatable motion. The motion to lay on the table, it doesn't actually kill it for the evening, because you could have a motion to reconsider later on and bring it forward. And a motion to lay on the table does require a two-thirds majority. It is not debatable. Moderator will ask for a counted vote. All those in favor of laying it on the table, in other words, taking no more action on this tonight until either the town meeting is... Sir? No, not under town bylaw. No, you can bring it up in the current meeting, actually. All right, I have, hold on a minute, I have a point of information. There's no debate on the motion to table, and I don't know the answer to that question. Is there any other points of order or points of information? Because the motion to lay on the table is not debatable. I'll check with Council, hold on. It would have the same effect, according to Town Council, as if the article had never been put forward. It would have the same effect as if the article was never put forward, whatever that is. Okay, there is no really debate on an article laid on the table, but it does require a two-thirds majority. All those in favor of laying the article on the table, that means the article will not be acted on currently. It may be reconsidered by another motion or vote before the end of this town meeting, but it will go away at the end of this town meeting if the town meeting is dissolved. All those in favor of the motion to lay this article on the table, please rise and remain standing until your vote is counted. Okay, and the moderators count here. Yeah, good, let's count this one out. Thank you. Be seated. All those opposed to laying this article and its amendment on the table, please rise. Thank you, please be seated. There being 55 in favor of laying the motion on the table and 76 oppose, the motion to lay on the table is defeated. Debate will continue on the... I think... Okay, we're going to move the question on the motion on the floor at this point in time, okay? This, the motion to move the question, or to move the previous question, applies only to the amendment. Wait a second, let me just check that. Hold on a minute. I just have to check something here, if you give me a second. Okay, unless otherwise specified, it only applies to the motion immediately pending. So, the motion to move the question would apply to the actual article, the actual amendment here. Now, we're going to, I'm sorry, call you a clarification? Okay, she's asking for clarification on the amendment. Right now, the motion that's on the floor is to move the previous question. In other words, to see if we're going to vote on the amendment. When we get back to voting on the amendment, then we'll read the amendment again for you, okay? This requires a two-thirds vote to move the previous question. All those in favor of moving the previous question, being the motion on the floor? All those opposed to moving the question? Let's have, let's try to do a lot of counting. All those in favor of moving the question on the amendment, please rise. Let's count this one to be sure. Sorry for all the exercise, folks. We want to make sure it's correct. Move the question. To get a vote on the amendment. To get a vote on the amendment. This is to get a vote on the amendment. All right, Mr. Costa. The current vote that's in, on the floor here, we want to make sure this is clear. This is a two-thirds vote to move the question. In other words, to move ahead and vote on the amendment. It does not approve the amendment, it does not approve the main motion. This only is to go ahead and vote on the main motion, on, on the amended motion. Is that clear? Okay.
More, mister? Hope people are stood up in the back when they can explain.
That's fine, you want, do you want to go in the back? Because we got people after we give the explanation weren't clear on the vote. Thank you. So a yes vote here will make us move right to the motion, we'll read the motion of order, and a no vote means we continue debate on the amendment. Thank you, please be seated. All of those who are opposed to the movement of the question, that is those who want to continue debate on the amendment, not on the main article, but just on the amendment. Thank you, the count's completed, let's get a tally and we'll move on from there. There being, being 98 in favor of moving the question and 34 against, the motion to move the question has passed, so we're actually going to move to the amendment. I will read the amendment myself, and then we'll move to voting on the amendment. Mr. Costa, on Mr. Costa's motion, he moves that the town authorize a conservation restriction, CR, on a portion... Can we have quiet in the, in the hall, please? Thank you. Move that the town authorize a conservation restriction, CR, on a portion of certain parcel of land, approximately 32.0 plus or minus acres, as shown on a plan of land on file at the office of the town clerk and identified as shown on the Holbrook assessor's map as parcel 05-002. Land currently held as tax possession of the town of Holbrook, provided that a portion of the land, up to 6.1 acres of the 32 plus or minus acres, may be excluded from the CR. The intent of the CR is to preserve 26-plus acres of the 32-plus or minus acres for outdoor recreation by and the education of the general public and to protect the national, natural habitats of fish, wildlife, plants, and ecosystems preserved forest land. The CR shall not allow the property and allow alterations to the property in perpetuity. This is the motion that we're voting on now. This is a amendment to the main motion. To amend this, it requires a simple majority. All those in favor of the motion as read and offered by Mr. Costa and is seconded, please raise your hands. All those opposed? Oh, boy, let's count this one out, too. When I was a kid, we used to watch a show called Romper Room with Miss Jean, and she used to make you stand up and sit down and...
[laughter]
I'm reliving that nightmare. All those in favor, again, of the motion should be standing, and those opposed should not stand at this time.
All right, I am still...
Okay, let's start from the back again. Thank you for your point of information. All of those in favor of this, of this amendment? Now, again, this doesn't mean the main motion passes, it just means the amendment. Thank you, be seated. All of those opposed to the amendment, please rise or remain standing until you're being Thank you, the count been taken, please be seated, we'll wait the tallies done. Uh, no, actually, this is ex parte, what we're doing is just, uh... I'm sorry? I'm sorry, I can't, you have a point of information or, or a point of privilege about not being able to hear, or... Could you grab a microphone and let me know what that is? I, I can't hear what you're saying.
Thank you, sorry. Christina Moet, Precinct 3. It's been very frustrating tonight for people from the table who are speaking without a microphone. We don't know what's being said, and we're supposed to be making decisions on things we can't even hear. So it's just frustrating.
Understood. The conversation I was having with the clerk was tallying the votes up. It wasn't in relation to the article, it's procedural. We need to make sure the counts are right. So if I go over to the table there, I'm letting her know about something, and occasionally I'll need clarification from the town council, which is also not part of the debate, that's why it's not public on my part. We do ask folks not to have conversations in the audience and at the tables during debate. Okay, on Mr. Costa's amendment, there being 49 for this amendment, I mean, instead of being 89 for, four and 42 against, the motion to amend carries. We now return to debate on the main motion as amended. Does anybody wish to speak on the main motion as amended? Okay, we have a motion on the floor to move the main motion as amended. The motion has been made and seconded.
Your point of order? If I raise my hand to talk, I have no time to get up and talk anymore.
Okay, let's, let's grab the, grab the microphone.
If someone raises their hand to talk and doesn't have a chance to get up to the mic and talk, and someone moves the question, it's not fair.
Thank you. Hold on a minute. Mr. Merrigan, do you wish to withdraw your motion?
Uh, just a, a point of order. It, it, as far as moving the question, all...
Mr. Merrigan, address the moderator. No cross-examination.
All the point of order is, is that if we're moving the question, we're asking the town meeting to vote on whether or not we're tied of debating the question or whether or not we're going to vote it up, up or down.
This is not a point of order, please take your seat. Um, no, let's go ahead here. There's a motion on the floor to move the question, okay? Uh, this motion's been made and seconded. It was made before the speaker was in the act of actually speaking. The rulebook says that the, may, the motion may not interrupt the speaker. Uh, and so we've got a rule kind of, like, the saving grace on this, as Mr. Merrigan so elegantly points out, is that it takes two-thirds of you to move the question. So if two-thirds of you want to move the question, then we'll do that. If, if, if you don't, then we continue debate. Motion is non-debatable, this is why you can't make the comment. All those in favor of moving the question, please rise. This is a two-thirds majority. This means we move to the main motion as amended. And a no vote here means we continue to debate on the main motion as amended. Thank you, be seated. All of those opposed to moving the question, please rise or remain standing until you're counted. Counting being completed, please sit down, I'm just going to get the tally here. Okay, there being 86 for moving the question forward and 45 oppose, the motion to move the question does not carry, we return to debate. Moderator does caution against repetitive petitions.
Mike is...
Someone is, your point of order or point of information back here? Please stand up, what is it?
What was the challenge of the count?
No, a counted vote is not, is not challengeable by the, by town meeting times. Um, again, we're going to avoid repetitive petitions. I do have, I know someone had a complaint that there didn't get to speak. Do you still wish to speak? Right now, we're going to, moving to debate on the main article as amended. One, two, three, four. We're going to, we're going to try to balance off pros and cons here. Again, the hour is getting late, brevity is a mark of scholarly debate. Sir?
Question was for town, what's that?
Identify yourself in your precinct.
Tom Haskins, Precinct 4. Question was for town council. Is there a way to change the status or zoning of the land so that no longer has economic value, so therefore would not have to be auctioned?
Thank you. Town council, I, you want to make sure you're into that mic hard, it's kind of...
Yeah, I, I got it.
So you can hear you.
Uh, there, there is no opportunity to be changing of the zoning in this particular parcel. It's, uh, I'm, I'm not even certain what the zoning is, but it's, uh, established and it wouldn't change unless town meeting changed the zoning of the parcel.
Okay, uh, let's, um, we have a couple more, let's get the young lady here, and then I'll move to you on the other side. And then I had two back here. Three, uh, one, two, okay? Thank you.
Ms. Moderator, very quickly, Katie Goldrick, Precinct 2. I just have a quick question. If any of this information is incorrect, uh, we are asking on the spot questions from legal. If any of it's incorrect, considering the sec, the amended motion is so drastically different from the first, and it includes a lot of information that wasn't originally in the first one, if, if any of this information that has been provided to us is incorrect and we vote on it, do we have any, um, um, resi, yeah, thank you, recourse after the vote has been taken?
Thank you, Ms. Goldrick. Uh, town council? Again, we're not following the rules strictly here, we want to get everybody a chance to talk and also try to get answers to important questions.
Mr. Moderator, we've had a, a, a valid warrant, an article, we've had a motion. Uh, there has been a great deal of attention paid to this particular article and several votes taken so far. Any vote taken on this amended motion at this particular point in time would be considered
I'm sorry, his answer was that the, the, are the, any vote taken on this would be considered binding. Okay, I had, um, back here, we had one, sir? Yep, come on, let's get a microphone for you.
Mike Reith, Precinct 3. My question is whether or not the 26 and the 6, whether, what the ownership would be after the auction, if it would all be under one owner, and if it would be, is there an opportunity to split it up so that the 26 belongs to the forest and 6 belongs to the purchaser?
Thank you for your question. I think that's probably on the legal side, too. Unless, Tim, you want to try to field that?
Well, it's certainly beyond the amendment and the question at hand right now.
Let's let town council try to answer it, then. And the question goes to whether, whether the town would retain title or whether it would be different owner, I believe?
In order for a conservation restriction to be valid, there, it needs to be a donor and a recipient. In this case, the, the purchaser of the property of all 32 acres would be donating the 26 acres in a conservation restriction, thereby that owner continuing to own that land, but restricted in perpetuity for conservation purposes.
Thank you. Uh, I'm going to switch. I know I have one more, I have one more speaker here, but we also had somebody up here on the other side, so I'll try to balance a little bit pro and con. And again, keep it brief, the hour is getting late. Mr. Gordon?
Mr. Moderator, I just want to make sure folks understand a yes vote at this point in time and a no vote. So a yes vote would...
Okay, so I'll tell you what a yes vote and no vote is. A yes vote would move the article as amended, and I'll read that.
Right, so, so it would have the effect of restricting construction on 26 of the 32 acres, which, if it doesn't pass, the intent of the town treasurer is to restrict the auction to, to restrict 26 of the 32 acres through the auction process. So either way, we end up at the exact same place. Either the treasurer will on his own auction it off and restrict 26 acres, or per the town meeting vote, he'll be, he'll, he will be auctioning it off based on the amend, the amended motion protecting in, in, uh, the, the 26 acres. So there's no, both, both, uh, both scenarios end, bring us in the exact same spot.
I had Mr. Greeley next.
Kevin, are you also online? Okay. Chuck Greeley, Precinct 2. Uh, second time I've heard the word in, the words "in perpetuity," which to me means forever, and it's my understanding that the conservation restriction through various votes, legislative actions, et cetera, can be taken away. So that doesn't mean it's in perpetuity. And this has been the whole point of this, is we're trying to make it permanent, so that 100 years from now it's here, despite anybody's attempt to vote for it after we're all gone.
Thank you, Mr. Greeley. I'm informed that there was a handout in the audience. Why don't you come on down, we'll get a microphone for you, too. And again, the hour is late and brevity is appreciated.
Dave Sitrone, Wayman Street. I'm still confused. I want a yes or no answer. Does the town have to sell the property?
Thank you, Mr. Sitrone. Who would like to try to respond to that? I guess, yeah, good as any, I... I'm running out of people to call on here. Yeah, this is a usual, a little unusual for a debate. We're, we're allowing a lot of questions and some back and forth on the limit, but I want to make sure that everybody has all the information they need and gets to make a good decision and vote correctly.
It is my fiduciary responsibility to sell this piece of property and get the taxes back, get the property back on the tax rolls and recover our taxes that haven't been paid, but we've already spent it. We've spent this money already. So we want, you know, we need to get it back in and continue putting this property on the rolls. Again, my fiduciary responsibility as tax title custodian.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Greeley, let's, let's hear for some new faces, and I've got a couple of other folks that haven't spoken before.
Brian Walsh, Precinct 1. This sounds to me like the perfect amendment. It, it's a, it says, Mr. Stinson said, it's a win-win. For those who are of the opinion that we should put this on the tax rolls, get the money for the sale, we are going to do that for all 32 acres. For those who are very concerned about the, the land protection, we are putting in place very strong protection for 26 of the most sensitive acres. It, it, to me, is the best alternative for everybody. It covers off on everything that we need. I, I don't understand why anybody would be opposed to it.
Thank you. Again, it, it displays a motion approval, disapproval. Um, let me get Ms. McGahey, and then I have you... No, I have Mr. McGahey next.
I just wanted to say, no one has mentioned the value of what this would be for Holbrook. That 32 acres will bring in taxes of $1,450,000.
I'm sorry, do you have a point of information, or... We're open in debate, and Mr. McGahey's within bounds here. Thank you for your point of order.
And the total project will be $3,990,000. So it's a very valuable piece of land for the town of Holbrook. And people that want the conservation would probably think that they would rather that money will pay off the school.
Thank you, Mr. McGahey. Ms. Curran? Now, I have a speaker up, coming up here.
Yes, Susan Curran, Precinct 2. Does anybody know what restrictions are on conservation land? Is hunting allowed? Does anybody know that? Are there any restrictions on conservation land? Are there any restrictions on conservation land?
Okay, thank you. Is there somebody that can answer that question regarding what those restrictions? We're just checking on the motion to amend right now. Sure, you can try to respond.
So specifically, there are different ways that when the conservation is protected that says you can do certain things on it. For instance, you can have golf courses as conservation land, so you can mow the grass, you can add driveways, and so on and so forth. Specifically within this, the CR shall not allow alterations to the property in perpetuity. So it doesn't allow any, you can't do something to it unless, again, you go through that three-step process of conservation, two-thirds vote of town meeting, and the state saying, we never, we no longer want this as conservation land, which guarantee is never going to happen once it's in conservation land at the state, they're not going to change their mind on it.
Ms. Greeley, you had your hand up?
Yes, thank you.
Who else?
So with this conservation restriction that Mr. Costa has put before us, my questions are, the, well, the secretary of, what's his name, the environmental secretary, will he be signing off on this? And also, with conservation restrictions, they're only as permanent as the town's ability to monitor the land, because that's a huge thing with all these trusts, and also to monitor the deed. If the person who buys the property changes the name of the corporation or transfers it to his son who lives in New Jersey, then that deed restriction has to be transferred, and somebody has to be monitoring that. We don't have the capacity to monitor that sort of a thing.
Okay, is that, thank you. Mr. Costa is up next. Who is still in line here?
As a named member of the, on the deed of the Conservation Commission would be, they would be party to any deal to sell that land. So the deed restriction stays with the land, whether or not that person, A sells to the person B, to C, to D, that perpetual conservation protection is in place on that, unless, as I said, that three-step process. That's the only way to reverse it.
You have the floor.
So I'm confused. I was just told if we sell the land, we could pay off the schools, but a few minutes ago we were told we already spent the money.
Ms., you have the floor in the blue sweater, and I'll have you next. Let's get the microphone on, so.
Battery's dead.
The battery die on that, or?
I'm not an expert in math, but I just would like to understand why you went from thirty-two down to twenty-six. What's the difference? And I also would like to just address you and your response about paying off the school if we allowed more businesses other than-
First of all, there's no use of personalities, pointing out somebody and saying you is out of order.
Okay, I apologize for that, but I'm just trying to understand how you can say that by putting in a condo and someone buying land, it's going to pay off our school, when if we just allowed businesses other than just restaurants, we'd be able to pay off the school a lot sooner. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Do we have any? Mr. Costa, did you have a speaker?
Just quickly, I think there's-
No, let's, is there a question pending for you?
Yeah, about the tax money versus revenue money. Somebody said, well, we already spent the money. I want to explain that very briefly.
If you want to speak in general terms about that, do so, but avoid cross-examination and getting back and forth.
Absolutely. So to answer about the money that, when somebody said that the money was already spent, that's talking about the tax-taking process. We spend the money, we assume we're going to collect taxes eventually, just like when we passed the budget tonight. So we pass the budget assuming we're going to collect taxes, because eventually, worst case, we'll take the possession, we'll take the property and resell the property at auction, and that's how we'll recoup our money. That's how the process works. That's why the money that was spent was spent over whatever, however long these people weren't paying their taxes, and every single year, we were spending that money, assuming that eventually we're going to get that money back. So that's what the individual's talking about, about the money's already spent. That's how tax-taking works.
Ms., you have the floor. Let's get a microphone to you, or, sir, I have you a second. Wait for the microphone.
Ellen Walsh, Precinct 2. I'm moving the question.
This is fairly, okay, so the decision of the moderator here is procedural, right? There's a motion on the floor to move the question, but we've also tried to move the question on the previous motion and on the current motion. So this motion could be considered repetitive and under the powers the moderator has can rule it out of order. It's not sufficient time has passed to recount what we counted a few minutes ago. Mr. Unitz, what do you rise for? What is your point of order? Yeah, I hear you. So the question is, is there anybody that's got anything new out here, any different Can we do two more speakers? Let's get this gentleman here first. I'm going to rule that as repetitive. We'll get two more speakers in here, and then we'll try to move to a vote, okay? Sir in the corner, quickly, get a microphone. And these are people that haven't spoken before.
I'm Matt Warren, I live on Wayma Street. If the land is put into conservation but is bought by a private property, can he stop people from going onto that land?
Okay, thank you. We've heard from you, there was one new person back here, the microphone, please stand up.
Rena Benovik, Precinct 1. I'm just asking, have we, do we know what wants to be built on the six acres? I mean, is it six houses, or is it high-density apartments? I mean, that makes a huge difference in terms of-
I think we're, there's going to be a little bit out of order for that, because we're talking about retaining some land for conservation, and this isn't really a zoning or a construction article. Is there anybody up here that would like to try to answer that question? Does somebody know what the zoning is for that area? Again, we don't have to do that. Is there anybody else that hasn't had a turn to spoke, to speak on this? We can move this. Okay. Your question again was that, is, okay, so if he saw it the private owner, Mr. DeLuca, can other people go on that land?
The proposed conservation restriction would allow public access.
Okay, seeing no more hands, let's move to the motion as amended. The motion is amended, and I'll read the motion again so we understand clearly what we're voting for. We move that the town authorize a conservation restriction, CR, on a portion of a certain parcel of land, approximately thirty-two point zero plus or minus acres, as shown on the plan of land on file at the office of the town clerk and identified as shown on the Holbrook Accessors map as parcels 05-002, comma, land currently held as a tax possession of the town of Holbrook, provided that a portion of the land, up to 6.1 acres of the thirty-two plus minus acres, may be excluded from the CR. The intent of the CR is to preserve twenty-six plus acres of the thirty-two plus minus acre property for the outdoor recreation, buy, and the education of the general public, and to protect natural habitats of fish, wildlife, plants, and ecosystems, preserve forest land. The CR shall not allow alterations to the property in perpetuity. The moderator is going to take a quick recess just for one second to confer with town council to determine the quantum of the vote on the article as amended. Okay, I've been informed by town council that this requires a two-thirds vote, and please, after this vote's over, we have a couple more quick articles to get out. I appreciate you hanging in for a few minutes, there are all no action, and we need to make sure we have a quorum as we get through those. The count will be counted. The count that we counted by the tellers? No, we don't divide the room here. We're going to divide the room by counting, okay? I will explain that. I will explain the motion. I just read the motion, and this requires a two-thirds majority. The two-thirds majority will pass the original motion as amended. The amendment that I just read replaces the entire initial motion and will be the end result of this article, and that would be, in loose terms, to pervasive conservation restriction on twenty-six of the thirty-two. That's what the article we're voting on. It does require a two-thirds majority. Is everybody clear on that?
A no vote on that would kill the entire-
A no vote, a no vote on that would kill the entire article. That is correct. Okay. So we have, we have the stage set here. It's been a great debate, very interesting parliamentary, everybody was good and civil, nobody was hurt, and we talked this one out well. We're going to do a counted vote here. All those in favor of the article as amended, please rise. This requires a two-thirds majority and be counted. We counted everybody up front, too? Tellers, do we count the folks standing up front? Yes, okay, please be seated. All those opposed to the motion as amended, please rise. We'll get a count just to be sure, but I think- Thank you, please be seated. I'm sorry, who had the other person?
I did.
Okay, I, thank you. Okay, there being one sixteen, four, and sixteen against. The motion as amended carries. Mr. Costa, we're moving to Article 28.
Mr. Moderator, I move no action on Article 28.
Motion moved and no action on Article 28. All those in favor of taking no action, all those opposed. Mr. Costa?
Mr. Moderator, I move no action on Article 29.
Motion moved and seconded, any conversation? All those in favor, no action. All those opposed?
Mr. Moderator, I move no action on Article 30.
All those in favor, no article, action on Article 30. All those opposed to no action. Mr. Costa?
Mr. Moderator, I move to dissolve town meeting.
Motion made, seconded and dissolved. Thank you, everybody. Thank you for your service. Sorry for the long night, we'll try to do better next time.